Okay, guys, we're opening the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, March 4th, 2014. First, I'm gonna open the business meeting. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. So first, we are going to tentatively be meeting with the town planner again and the Affordable Housing Task Force with regards to accessory apartments. In the meantime, let's go ahead and approve, we're gonna approve some minutes, and I guess where's business on here, Patty? Is that, we're gonna do that first?
Yeah, new business.
Under new business.
February 4th.
All right, I'm not, where is that here?
And they both attached.
They both took one report? We have whole business.
They're both, um, February 4th.
We're gonna do a financial report here, or not?
No, I took that off because I figured Howard would be here.
All right, all right.
I wouldn't have time, and there wasn't much to it.
Zoning application revisions, I think we'll address that at a different time again. We don't need to vote on that, okay?
Yeah, I just kept it on.
Yep, thank you.
So just a motion.
So town planner's the first one, so then we just need to make a motion to approve the minutes. See if we can track that down, you guys.
February 4th, right Patty, they're both?
Yeah, they already nailed them file. It's right under new business.
Here we go, business meeting, yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the business meeting minutes of February 4th, 2014. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dave wasn't here, he's not gonna vote, that's fine.
Then just say abstain.
Abstain.
Um, with regards to that, did Dave need to read the minutes for the, for the actual hearing?
He did, but they're not going.
Not for business.
They were drawing.
Oh, oh, that's right, because, uh, okay, yep.
Mute, not kidding, mute. Um, correspondence?
Do we wanna approve those anyway, or would we just do that?
Well, we only did the business meeting.
Did you say business and hearing?
I said business.
Oh, so, wanna amend that to business and hearing?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, okay?
Somebody like to second that?
I second that, friendly amendment.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
You got all guns blazing tonight.
That would also include minutes of the public hearing, okay. Okay.
Um, correspondence? And this is, this I received today from the building inspector, so this is a new denial for 70 West Main Street. He revised it, and they're requesting to be put on the April 4th hearing at 7:00.
We don't need to read that, do we? Or do we?
When we get to the hearing, we gotta open it and all that.
Oh, the new, the new, uh, you're talking about the withdrawal?
That's just the denial, that's just, this is just the new denial, that's all.
Denial for variance?
For use variance.
Okay. Was John able to get that for you today?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, I just kinda stuck it in your agenda, it's just hanging out there, it's not stapled or anything. I just put it in there about 10 minutes ago.
It's a piece that's, it's loose.
There it is.
That's the accessory stuff, keep going.
No, this is it.
Yeah, um, we all went up, we'll pass the minutes.
It's way in the back, way in the back.
Correspondence.
Okay, thank you very much. And that we'll be reading in the hearing. Yet, we don't need to actually read the denial during the hearing, do we?
No, Dad, we're gonna read the withdrawal.
And where is that, the withdrawal form?
I have everything here when you're ready to open that one.
All right, great, so we'll open that hearing later on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the next thing is an email from, it came from the town administrator. It's new state ethics commission regulation. And he, I was just told to distribute that to the board.
You emailed this as well.
And I emailed it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, public notice from the planning board for special permit. 78 North Street, I think this, this is the court. 78 North Street, I think that's the one, you had a, you had a plan on this before, this is kind of a little older. So that's just a public hearing notice. The other one is a notice of public hearing for the zoning amendments that took place on February 26th, um, for the accessory apartments. This is what, um, is, right now, I guess, a placeholder on the town meeting warrant, and it says, see if the town, and it says removing the following text and inserting the following text. So I guess when Howard comes in, we can load that. And that's just the, the notice that I asked for, 'cause I didn't have it before. The next is a, just a cover letter for the notice of intent for 60 East Main, keep going.
Last page.
Last page, fine.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, that's the filing, the Georgetown Plaza filed, the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission for 60 East Main and 60 for our hearing tonight. So they reef, they've, they didn't have to refile with, with CONCON, 'cause you don't have to refile a notice of intent, you can just amend it or add to it, so that's what they did. They included 60 East Main Street in, 'cause the, the original filing didn't include 60 East Main Street.
It mentions a plan, but we don't have a copy of that plan?
I mean, I have the big copy, it's, I can get that if you wanna see that, I just didn't, I couldn't, it's a, it's a big one, so I couldn't copy it or anything. But I have that in the office if you wanna take a look at it.
Okay. When, when big plans?
It's basically the, it's basically this watershed.
Is it the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
You also had some, sorry, was there something else that was last?
Nope.
Uh, there was some correspondence from, regarding that hearing, do you have that for, pass out for later, while we get to that hearing, from Tilly?
The withdrawal, the?
There was some correspondence from Tilly that she wanted to make sure was read into the.
That's for the first hearing?
You have that?
I have, yep, everything's.
You have that?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I didn't know if you would've put it in.
It's all right here.
You got it, okay.
Yeah, I don't put correspondence for the hearings on the business agenda, I put them, they, at the beginning of the hearing. So, actually, that's next, so if you wanna just hand that over to Paul or Jeff.
Yep, thank you. So to be clear, there's a continued, that, the planning board continued their hearing to the 26th with regards to this accessory apartments stuff?
Right.
All right.
I don't know why it was, yeah, you said you saw him outside? I mean, we can, um, if you wanna.
Want me to go see if they're ready?
Reset, we, yeah, I'm gonna go check off. I can go look for him.
Where are they?
I got, I got Harry's number, I can.
Oh, you have the number. May I read, I must've missed.
I do too, I can find this one.
Uh, it, oh, it's right here.
You doing Harry or Howard?
Uh, that correspondence from Tilly is gonna, we're gonna, we can read it into the record during the hearing.
I saw it on the email.
Can she, can you read it?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Somehow missed the email, I guess, sorry.
I knew what you were saying.
Thank you.
My computer does not like Gina's last name.
Text her, go and get her.
So that's Howard comes up in your, in your agenda under the first, under old business, which I put first, or all the, um, the comments from Jeff and the comments from the building inspector.
Yep, yep.
Okay?
It's stuck?
Well, Harry has CPC at 7:30 on the second floor.
So he's like a legend.
But Howard doesn't, Howard's not on CPC. If he's here, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, should we have them stop the tape for a little while? We've, we've got plenty of time, so.
You want me to?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah, I have her take of recess while they look for Howard.
I don't need to. The SHI number, right? So they're seeing, I think, a lot of accessory apartments in town that may be rented, say, hey, it's an opportunity maybe to, to get some of these into that, get some of those units into that calculation. So they have to qualify, though, in order to qualify, the unit has to be rented at whatever the portable rate is, and the tenants have to qualify, and that would be a qual, I forget what the term was, it is, I don't really know, but we talked about this a bit last month, that it would have to be approved by somebody, somebody, a DHC-approved consultant that would basically flush these, flush the applicants through and present to the renter, the landlord, the qualified tenants.
With the limitations on size right now, being up to 700 square feet.
Right.
700 square feet could easily accommodate two bedrooms.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
I mean, as far as apartments go, you know, easily.
Easily, yeah, good.
Easily.
That was my point.
You know, so is that going to be something else, where you say, well, you know, you've got a small one because you're only allowed to go 30% of your existing living space, so you're only at like 400 square feet, and yet you've got a bigger one and you're at 700 square feet, do you put the same restrictions on both of them? Where 700 square feet, um, easily, you know, could be two bedrooms, one and a half baths, I mean.
That's gonna be added to the list now.
I, I agree, totally.
I'm adding that to the list.
This is, this is why I say I'm not sure you go from the intent of the accessories apartment section of our bylaw, which is clearly to allow family members to live together in close quarters, and generally it's, you know, it's senior parents or something like that, and those apartments are used in that manner. If now, even if it is a two-bedroom, if now they move out and you open that up to any qualifying family, fine. Can you now have four people living in there without any detriment to the neighborhood? Just 'cause, I mean, I don't know, you got, I'm just.
And additionally, John has got a few comments as well, so I think. We as a board will, over the next couple of days, come up with a definitive, uh, brief letter to them about our feelings about these things. Is there anything you want to talk about further specifically?
Yeah, just that I reviewed John's comments, then I added some, and I sent a memo to Patty and to Howard. And then I responded back to Harry because he was really looking for some zoning comments and hadn't seen my original set, so then I sort of added some more. So I don't know if Patty, maybe we can compile these. I mean, we've got several issues here. I don't know if anybody wants to take a quick look at that. Basically, my concern. You know, conceptually, this may be a terrific idea. Specifically, there was a, some dramatically a simple change that they were proposing, but I think fundamentally, it takes that section of the bylaw and substantially changes it in the intent of it, and I'm not sure how we as a board are going to be able to sort of enforce it, because I, a lot of things confuse me and I spelled some of those, those things out here. So, anyway, if, I would suggest people kind of read that, if you guys read that, and then get back to Patty with any other comments that might have. And if not, maybe we could just reformulate these onto one sheet from the zoning board.
Sure. And, um.
And then maybe you could review them, or I could review them.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
Between now and, when is their hearing? I'm sorry, the sixth?
They continued it to March twenty six.
Oh, twenty six, excuse me. So we got a little time, and then we could forward that directly to them.
I'm a little confused on the timing. So we, they would continue the hearing on March twenty six and it still would go before the town meeting, or, or?
I'm not clear if they're gonna make the, they did not make the warrant, did they?
Well, they open and close the warrant all the time, so they closed it last night. But the, the warrant's still in draft form, because there's still, for example, planning took off something, um, the wind bylaw. They want to work on more. I watched it, because I was looking for them to take the accessory apartment off of there, but they didn't. Um, so they'll open it back up to adjust the warrant, and, because the language isn't, isn't finished back from KMP, or I don't know if that requires them to open it or not. But it'll be opened and closed again, so there'll be, and it can, if it doesn't make it off the warrant, it could just be passed over at town meeting. But the selectmen have to put it on there. So the select, so the planning board can, you know, hold another hearing, and if it's not in time, I don't think, I think that's gonna be way too late.
That's what I'm trying to.
That's up to the selectmen.
Because it's gotta go to print, and, you know, I don't think anything, maybe the first week of April, I haven't talked to Mike. That's the drop dead, that then they need to, you know, stop printing them, so.
But from our perspective, I think our comments need to get to them prior to the continuation of that hearing. I can't imagine they're gonna put it on the warrant until that hearing is at least concluded.
Right.
I would imagine, but.
Which is March twenty six?
If anybody wants to attend, I don't know if, actually, I'm out of, I'm out of the country that week, so if somebody wants to attend, they'd certainly welcome that, I'm sure. Somebody from the zoning board wants to attend.
So we'll start with an email, if you can consolidate the, the current comments, and the only other thing we talked about was, what, in your comments, was it mentioned the, the possibility of limit, of, uh, keeping it at a fifty-five and older?
That was one of my suggestions. That, I mean, I had concerns about the fact that these units are not, and, and John, John had more technical comments in nature, as far as egress, and if you're creating a rental property, then it requires certain things that perhaps an accessory apartment doesn't require. Structurally, mechanically, technically. So that's one whole realm of things that needs to be at least thought through, and then my immediate thought was, well, these are pretty small units in general. They don't have separate egresses, they're meant to, to be in close quarters. They're generally maintaining single-family characteristics of the house, which means they're one, generally one-bedroom units, they're, they're small, so to then allow them to be rented to something other than perhaps a senior couple, or a single senior, living with the family, to maybe now a mom and a couple of kids, or whatever the scenario may be. I, I'm just not sure how well these, a lot of these units can accommodate that. So by perhaps at least allowing a fifty-five and over restriction, then the units will more likely be occupied.
As intended.
As they were originally intended to be occupied, albeit not a family member, but you're gonna have a demographic within the confines of that house that would perhaps mirror, you know, this accessory apartment usage that we allow now. So from a detrimental impact to the neighborhood kind of thing, you know, you eliminate perhaps all the extra traffic that may come along with kids getting older. You know, all those other things that, so, and that was one thing. Then the other thing had to do, other comments had to do with technically, how, how do we layer special permits perhaps on, perhaps on top of one another? If, if there has to be a deed rider and has to be permanent with the, with the property, where the special permits for accessory structures go with the owner, and there's a lot of questions that I'm just not sure how, how we would handle that. So it just needs to be clear, I think.
Well, I have a question for you. How does the Affordable Housing Task Force play into this? Because it's my understanding right now that they are looking at being able to subsidize, they have, they do have funds, fu- funding. And are they looking to be able to, let's say, let's say it's a firefighter who, uh, you know, could be a single guy, could be a couple, that want to move into town, they can't afford, they can't afford it, I mean, are they looking to actually oversee this and say, hey, we wanna, we wanna, we want input, that's why affordable housing is involved? Not just the over fifty-five, which I think that might fall, fall under another realm of responsibility for someone.
Well, they want to make sure that these uni, in order, they, they want to get these units on the calculation, on the sheet for the town. On the, is it SHI or HSI? I can never get it, I always get it backwards.
S-H-I.
That's on the calculation for the ten percent, so it's beneficial to town to continue to meet.
Subsidized housing inventory.
Thank you, Patty. The SHI number, right, so they're seeing, I think, a lot of accessory apartments in town that may be rented, say, hey, it's an opportunity maybe to, to get some of these into that, get some of those units into that calculation. So they have to qualify, though, in order to qualify, the unit has to be rented at whatever the portable rate is, and the tenants have to qualify, and that would be a qual, I, I forget what the term was of these, I don't, I don't really know, but we talked about this a bit last month, that it would have to be approved by somebody, somebody, a DHC-approved consultant that would basically flush these, flush, flush the applicants through and, and present to the, the renter, the landlord, the qualified tenants.
With the limitations on size right now, being up to seven hundred square feet.
Right.
Seven hundred square feet could easily accommodate two bedrooms.
Maybe.
I mean, as far as apartments go, you know, uh, easily.
Easily, yeah, good.
Easily.
That was my point.
Is that going to be something else, where you say, well, you know, you've got a small one, because you're only allowed to go thirty percent of your existing living space, so you're only at like four hundred s- square feet, and yet you've got a bigger one and you're at seven hundred square feet. Do you put the same restrictions on both of them, where seven hundred square feet, um, easily, you know, could be two bedrooms, one and a half baths, I mean?
That's gonna be added to the list now.
I, I agree, totally. This is why.
I'm adding that to the list.
This is, this is why I say, I'm not sure, you go from the intent of the accessories apartment section of our bylaw, which is clearly to, um, allow family members to live together in close quarters, and generally, it's, you know, it's senior parents or something like that, and, and those apartments are used in that manner. If now, even if it is a two-bedroom, if now they move out and you open that up to any qualifying family, fine. Can you now have four people living in there without any detriment to the neighborhood? Just because, I mean, I don't know, you got, you, I'm just saying the intent of the bylaw as it stands now, and then it's, it's changing that intent. And it could potentially change the intensity of use in all these locations beyond what we have, I don't know.
But if you look at an in-law apartment, is an in-law apartment anywhere at all restricted to just two people?
Not necessarily, no.
No.
No, it doesn't say.
Nope. It could be my sister with her three kids.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. So there's a lot of gray areas here that really haven't been brought up, as far as, you know, how many people do we place a restriction on that? I don't, I don't think that's feasible, as far as, you know, how many people should be living in it. You know, I mean, a lot of it really boils back down to, if you think back, goes back down to Board of Health. If they've got a four-bedroom, five-bedroom septic system, and they've got, you know, four bedrooms in the main house, then they're only allowed that one extra one. Is, did that actually happen? And that's also gonna go back to, all right, when it was, when they were given a certificate of occupancy, there was only one bedroom there, okay? It might have been a very large bedroom, you know, but, um, did somebody throw up a wall, you know? I mean, this whole thing that, you know, too, John brought up, and I, and I think that this could be, uh, a real difficult challenge, is as far as administrative and enforcement of this whole, whole process, and, you know, somebody else, somebody's gonna step up and say, well, you know what, administrative and enforcement isn't gonna come for you either.
Of course not.
Okay, so, you know, that could also evolve into budgetary restrictions.
Yep, I agree.
All right. Anything else? For now? I mean, we have to ponder it.
I'm done.
No, that was excellent. That's what we need to talk about.
We'll put that together, I'll add Dave's comments and, um, send it out to you, so you can look at it before I send it to the planning board.
I can tell.
I guess what concerns me is, so, the comments will be summarized, they'll be presented to the planning board, and then we still exist in isolation, and I really feel like this needs to be a conversation, a joint conversation that's actively engaged among both boards.
Well, they are having a hearing, so, I mean.
I guess.
The point of the hearing.
But, but it's on their schedule that none of us have necessarily agreed to, we can attend.
To put it on the warrant or not, too. I don't know if they'll get it.
No, I, you know, I know.
I, I guess I feel like this is, this is.
But you can always have a separate meeting with the task force and Howard, which I would think they would have.
That's what I feel like should happen.
Done in the first place?
Sorry. I mean, that's.
You know, we could, they can come in here, but we can go in there, I mean, same thing, I mean.
But, but I gue, I guess it needs to be mutually agreed upon. I mean, I don't know that I can make the twenty-six, maybe none of you can either, so it's not, it's, continues to be in isolation, and all we get to do is submit written comments, and it really needs to be a dialogue, this is a big change.
Well, it concerns me a little bit that if we submit written comments, because we did that before, and they didn't get them, so.
Uh, we didn't submit them as a board. I submitted them to Patty and Howard.
But it was still written comments that.
They will be read at the next hearing, guaranteed.
Okay. Okay.
Return of seat requests.
No, they.
I just, that would be my only. That would be my only concern, is just that the last time, when you, you took the time to write this, and they didn't get them, so.
Well.
We don't know if they get them, maybe we ask for confirmation.
I mean, we do need to put a little bit of thought into this, and actually present a well-written, specific. My only concern is it kind of is at the end of the road for our input. I don't, I doubt that it is, but like, we need to put so much thought into this, it's almost like we're re, we, we are rewriting the bylaw, which is a little complicated.
Well, I think at this point, they've got a proposal, okay, and it is what it is, it's very.
Yeah.
Right.
Brief, it doesn't have a lot of verbiage in it, in it, but like I said, I think a, a very simple, grammatical change to the bylaw complicates things dramatically. So, I mean, as written, these are my concerns. So I'm not rewriting anything, I'm just saying that I don't understand how a lot of this stuff, and Dave's got some other points. The way it's written, these are not addressed.
Right.
And, and that's what's being presented, so unless the thing gets completely rewritten in the next few days, or next few weeks, which I don't think is necessarily gonna happen, then, you know.
My concern is there's not timing to put it on the May town meeting. We don't have enough time.
It's, it's building, it's planning.
Yeah.
Okay, um, affordable housing, zoning.
I mean.
So anybody, and Board of Health.
I mean, that's one of my concerns, is I don't think we have enough time to.
And, and take this, because this was given to me today. This is a draft Saugus zoning bylaw for accessory apartments.
Oh, the six-page one?
It's six pages.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's like any other bylaw, you go into general requirements, purpose, definitions, procedures.
Well, they didn't come up with this in, you know, in, uh, in a couple of weeks.
I don't know how long they've been working on it, but they didn't tell us about it.
And this, mine as well, I mean.
Deed restriction dwelling units, I mean, they just want to change a line and then.
Task force, you know, you know, from all, all of the departments involved, all the committees involved.
Do it next year again. That's a bylaw. One line is not a bylaw to me, I don't know.
I would nominate you, you know, to represent, Sharon.
Well, let's, let's get the document going, first of all.
Okay.
Our, our responses and.
Patty, I'd like to be copied when you send that out.
Oh, I'll copy it.
Okay, good.
Good. Um, Paul, um, just, so the chairman of the planning board wants a specific comment sent to him.
Yep.
Along with these comments, so someone will come up with that and.
Okay.
Send that to me.
Yep, yep.
Because he's asking for a specific thing, he, the zoning board would like him to do at that meeting. But I just saw him downstairs.
Say that again, please.
He wants a specific statement from this, from the board.
Yep.
On what they want to do.
In conclusion, in other words, yeah, all right.
For his hearing on March twenty six.
Okay.
I thought he wanted our comments.
He wants the comments, but make, he wants a statement along with it.
A definitive statement.
Do you want to go forward, do you not want to go forward?
Not comfortable giving a definitive statement.
It's all right, well, let's get it written first.
Are you happy with it the way it is, or do you want to continue talking about it? I think he's what he's looking for.
Oh, that's, okay, we understand that, yeah. I, I, yeah, I get it. Ah, is that it for our business meeting? Okay, now would someone like to make a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, can we stop the tape for a minute, please? First thing I'd like to address is, uh, the hearing for.
Open first, and open, the legal opens it.
Okay, we are opening the hearing for sixty-four, seventy-four East Main Street, uh, it's the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, of course. Um, the Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, tape may be taped over. Uh, the members of the board are, well, first of all, I believe, Sharon, you were going to recuse yourself?
I will recuse myself.
And a butter?
Butter.
Okay, thank you very much. The additional remaining members are Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, and myself, Paul Shillen. Thank you.
Would you like me to read the legal?
Yes, please. Yep, thank you.
The need, the legal notice for public hearing sixty, sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street, March fourth, twenty fourteen. Location is Georgetown Hall, third floor, seven thirty P M, P M. Applications, petitions have been made by Constantine G. Scovanos as trustee of Mistress Reality Trust, Replac Ab North Reading, Mass. Zero one eight six four, for both sixty East Main Street, identified on Assessor's Map eleven A Lot eighty-six, and sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street, identified on Assessor's Map eleven A Lot eighty-five. Georgetown Plaza, Georgetown, Mass. Zero one eight three three, where both lots are located within the R A zone. The proposal includes proposed site alterations involving no change in the building size or square footage, but require a special permit to allow for change, extension of alteration of a pre-existing lawful non-conforming use and structure. The pro, proposal includes an increase in parking area and other site alterations for sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street portion of the lot pursuant to M G L, Chapter forty-eight, Section six to nine, and Georgetown zoning bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five, Section seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-seven, and ninety-four. A variance in connection with sixty East Main Street portion of the property to allow for commercial parking, septic system improvements, landscaping, and other uses, structures related to the Georgetown Plaza, in accordance with Georgetown zoning bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five, Section eighty-four, M G L, Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. Modifications to two previously approved variance, Section six finding decisions, including Z B A decision numbers ninety-seven seventeen and fourteen oh three pursuant to M G L, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, nine, and ten, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Section seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-four, eighty-seven, and ninety-four. A water resource special permit for both sixty East Main Street and sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street portions of the premises is required for sewage flow exceeding a hundred and ten gallons per day, per ten thousand square feet of lot area pursuant to M G L, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and Chapter one sixty-five, Sections twenty-nine through thirty-eight of the Georgetown zoning bylaws. Z B A file number fourteen dash oh nine.
Thank you very much, Gina. Uh, next, we're gonna go to applicant presentation, uh, after which I have three new correspondence that we're gonna read into the record. Is that okay?
You can do them any way you want, yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I, well, um, I'd prefer to get the correspondence out of the way, actually.
Do that for us?
I'll give one to you, I'll give one to you, and I'll read one. Uh, why don't you start, Dave?
Town of Georgetown Fire Department, to Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, from Chief Albert Beardsley, Georgetown Fire Department, February five, two thousand fourteen, regarding sixty East, East Main Street Georgetown Plaza plans. The fire department has reviewed the plans set forth by the board for the proposed changes to the Georgetown Plaza. At this time, there is one concern I will note, and that has to do with the proposed destruction of the residential structure. Given the age of this building, there needs to be confirmation as to the presence or lack thereof of asbestos materials. In a structure this old, the potential for asbestos materials inciding, flooring material, piping, and in around the furnace area need to be checked to be certain there is proper abatement. Active destruction of a building containing asbestos will release asbestos fibers into the atmosphere, as well as become retained in the ground. Asbestos became increasingly popular among manufacturers and builders in the late nineteenth century because of its sound absorption and its resistance to fire, heat, electro, electrical and chemical damage, and affordability. It was used in such applications as electrical insulation for hot plate wiring and building insulation. When asbestos is used for its resistance to fire or heat, the fibers are often mixed with cement, result, resulting in asbestos cement, or woven into fabric or mats. I'm confident you're likely addressing this issue, but I want to make sure my concern is heard.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Uh, from Howard Snyder to Patty Patari, dated Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen. Patty, in regards to the notice of hearing for sixty East Main Street and sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street, the planning office offers the following cursory comments in bulletproof format. Number one, the introduction states that the application, uh, excuse me, that the applicant is requesting from the Zoning Board of Appeals approval to enable the applicant to undertake renovations, parking, and other improvements. Please be aware that the planning board will review the applicant's proposed site improvements with a site plan approval application. Bullet number two, if the applicant seeks to complete Z B A review prior to initiating site plan approval with the planning board, the applicant may be required to revisit the Z B A with any amended documents that were modified during the site plan approval process. Number three, Section two outlines site improvements and references stormwater management improvements. The proposed stormwater changes will be reviewed by the planning board. Number four, has the historic commission been noticed or contacted regarding the residential structure on sixty East Main Street as proposed by the applicant to, uh, by the application to be raised? Proposed septic improvements to the, uh, to be reviewed by Board of Health. Applicant should ascertain when, when they will develop a definitive design, but the planning board will consider the septic design location during site plan approval. This is a complicated development with review by many town departments. The applicant should consider a multi-track review process that involves all of those departments, either simultaneously or with overlap. And finally, it is my opinion that the applicant should make site plan approval application before the planning board prior to completing their application with the Z B A. I've attached a PDF copy of the town's development review guidebook, note Section three, permits and processes. These are my cursory comments and do not reflect any comments or imply review of the application by the planning board. Howard Snyder, Town Planner.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, the, the third correspondence is from Tilly Evangelista, Patty. Uh, Patty Patari, that is, I am writing this note as a town citizen for over forty years, and as you know, have been an activist in protecting the character of the town. The planning board did not discuss this application, as I would have hoped, because of many reasons of which the weather is one and a backlog of work needed to be completed. Your cutoff for correspondence is the twentieth of February, so I'm submitting this email as a citizen. I'm recommending that the Z B A deny the request of the applicant for the following reasons. The applicant has created their own hardship by increasing the tenants and not by circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography. The building has had a history of many different kinds of tenants, with many different uses, of which the zoning board has granted, uh, has granted, which proves that the size of the parking lot is not critical. Septic upgrade in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight required by Title V, and the high groundwater table existed in nineteen ninety-eight. Granting a variance would substantially change the residential character of the zoning district, especially with an historic house of eighteen forty-four. A used variance is the greatest source of danger to the integrity of the zoning process, while at the same time being the most difficult to justify legally, quoted from Mass Zoning Manual. Modification of a variance, I was told by D H C D that the town must have the provision, have that provision in their bylaws, so I'm not sure that process is legal. I would appreciate my comments to be read at this hearing. Thanks, Tilly Evangelista. Okay, thank you. Um, you can go ahead and bring us up to speed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and other members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name is John Smolak with the firm of, uh, Smolak and Vaughn of North Andover. Attorney for the applicant, Mr. Riffy Trust. Also with me is Chris Barages of, uh, Barages, our project engineer, as well as Alexander Francis, our real estate manager for the applicant. Uh, as, initially as a procedural matter, I assume the board is, is consolidating the hearings into a single hearing for, for the variances and the special permits and the like as part of this process.
It's the way your application is stated, yeah, so I think that would be understandable.
Okay, certainly. So as, by way of background, as you recall, the board back in, uh, the middle of December of last year had issued a, an approval, uh, for additional uses, use variances for a portion of the property at sixty-four, seventy-four, uh, East Main Street. That decision also had the effect of amending, uh, certain conditions within the board's prior decisions from nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and two. At the time that we had filed the application and, and the board was reviewing it, the issues, as you may recall, were raised with respect to the retaining wall that was proposed along the, I guess, the north westerly boundary of the site, if you see on the site plan. Uh, in terms of the height of the retaining wall and the like, and how it detracted from, uh, the, the, I guess, the, the design of the site and impacts on abutting properties. And toward the end of that hearing, we had indicated that, uh, we had secured rights to purchase sixty East Main Street, which is the adjacent parcel in this area. And so as a result, we had withdrawn provisions, uh, of, of the relief requested relating to site-related issues, as opposed to use-related issues, so. So with that said, what we're proposing this evening is, is really a redesign that incorporates sixty, uh, East Main Street. Now that, that, uh, the, uh, the parcels are, are proposed to be combined in this area, uh, we had initially, uh, filed, and as you see in your materials, we had filed a request of a redevelopment of the site, which includes, uh, the removal of the house at sixty East Main Street. Since that time, we've had discussions with abutters and others concerning, uh, the existing historic house that's, uh, defined as historic within the, uh, the town's bylaws. And so, um, we had, uh, proposed to come in with two alternatives to you. Uh, one of which was the existing site plan, as you see, which, which shows the removal of the house at sixty East Main Street. And also the alternative, uh, excuse me. Main Street, and also the alternative, excuse me, for one second.
Can we pass these out, John? Do you want me to give these now?
If you could, yeah. And the, the alternative which includes and maintains the integrity of the existing house at East Main Street, sixty East Main Street. So, the materials that are being handed out include the same boards that you see, we'll see here this evening. The first two sheets show both the depiction of the board on the left as well as the landscaping plan, which are the, which shows the alternative without a house at sixty East Main Street. The, the second set of materials includes the board on the right-hand side that's up there, which includes maintaining the existing house at sixty East Main Street, along with accompanying landscape plan, as well as street elevations for the, for the entire site for the plaza as, as modified. And so, I guess, just to cut to the chase, unless the board feels otherwise, we would take the removal of the house off, off the, off the table and propose a redesign which incorporates the house. We, when we initially filed, we weren't entirely a hundred percent clear whether we would be able to accommodate the, the septic design needs of the site as well as parking needs of the site with the house located on the property, but since the filing, we've managed to determine that we could essentially keep the same layout that we have on both parcels, but also maintain the existing house. So, so I just wanted to point that out to you, and unless the board feels otherwise, I think we would just proceed and make a presentation based on maintaining the existing house on sixty East Main Street.
Okay.
Just, just to sort of identify the relief that's requested, we are seeking a special permit with respect to an extension of pre-existing lawful use slash structure for the main plaza area, sixty-four seventy-four East Main Street. It's the same relief we applied for before, but basically, the, the reason for the relief requested on the main plaza portion of the site is to accommodate the installation of additional parking, to accommodate the needs of the site. We've also, so the, the new parking that would be proposed, let me back up a bit, the existing site at the plaza includes a total of sixty-two parking spaces. And so, what we're looking to do is add additional spaces along the northeasterly boundary, also spaces to the rear of the site, and also spaces to the southe, south, southerly boundary. Those spaces that were in this area, in this area, were generally consistent with what we had proposed initially but withdrew. And so, the addition of the sixty East Main Street parcel allows us, enables us to include a row of parking in this location, basically flattens out the, the grade in that area that wasn't otherwise possible with the original proposal from the last hearing. We also would be proposing an addition of ten, approximately ten parking spaces in this area. If you look at this plan, the first four spaces or so, actually, I'm sorry with this laser, the first four parking spaces or so really divide, is the divider for the property line. So, it's basically an additional ten spaces that would be screened from the front, from landscaping and fencing, and we'll discuss that as, as part of the landscaping presentation. In addition, as had been discussed at, at the last set of hearings, and we'll bring it up again, the proposal involves alterations, actually, as it relates to the riverfront area of Penbrook, and we discussed that last time, that basically there's the, the riverfront area and also wetland resource areas, and, and the area behind the building, which is essentially all dirt and redded. It acts as a sort of a de facto parking area, but it's difficult to maneuver. Based on discussions with the Conservation Commission and others, we're proposing the previous pavers to the, to the rear of the site, and Chris Barages will get into that discussion a little bit later. But, but just suffice to say that we would be eliminating from that portion of the property about two thousand square feet of paved and pervious surfaces as a result of those changes. As it relates to the variances, they particularly relate to the sixty East Main Street site in this area. In order to accommodate the need for additional parking and the septic uses, we're proposing the relocation of the septic system in this area of the property. And basically, we're also proposing to, to add the additional ten spaces on, on this portion of sixty East Main Street. So, that's, I mean, those are the extents, that's the extent of the, of the improvements that are crossing over. And we'll, and we'll discuss the landscaping. This is an area that'll be re-landscaped with wildflowers and the like, and we'll discuss the, you know, the retention areas, or the, the retaining wall areas, the parking and the landscaping, and how that relates to the rest of the site. In addition, we are, we would be eliminating the, the existing curb cut at sixty East Main Street. We feel that if we're adding parking in this area, it might be better to just eliminate a curb cut and have the parking that's adjacent to the house just run through the existing parking area and run out through the plaza. And lastly, we are proposing for that house, perhaps a mixed use. It could be residential or it could be an office use. It's not clear at this time. It just is based on need. We certainly want to make sure that that use would be low intensity, and would expect that would be conditioned as such. And also, in the bill of inspectors denial letter, there was a discussion of modifying certain approvals from, certain conditions within prior approvals, consistent with what we had discussed at the last meeting. We can get into those later on if, if need be, but those are, I would say, minor conditions, basically, conditions incorporating the revised site plans into the decisions. So, basically, the revised site plans reflect the conditions for, for approval of the board.
That's, just a second, relating to the upgrade of the building itself, as far as the improvements to the building.
That's correct. And those, that's correct. And those two decisions relate to the plaza itself. One of, well, I'll, I'll get into it now, I guess. One of the conditions within the ninety-seven decision required that we have a fifty-foot width of curb cut. And basically, the existing conditions are thirty feet right here, and was it thirty-one feet, six inches?
Yeah, thirty-one feet, six inches is on the, on the other side, on the east side.
On the, on the right side.
Yeah.
And thirty feet in this area. And I think those are, reflect the existing conditions.
That's correct.
And you did look at the old plans that were approved in ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight.
And they did show a thirty-foot?
Thirty-foot curb cuts at both locations.
Thirty-foot, so we assume that there was a typo or something, not reflected. We weren't around at that time on that issue, but, but we, we think that a narrower curb cut, curb cut is appropriate for this circumstance, and that's consistent with what, the width of what normal curb cuts are. The other condition was that there would be a raised divider on the exit. This is the exit point right here. There was a requirement that there would be a raised curb to divide for those exiting left turnout, right turnout. And what we would be proposing is basically a stamped concrete divider as opposed to a raised island, and the reason being is that for maintenance purposes, for snow removal, we think it would be more appropriate to, to sort of have it more of a flush divider, with sort of like a rumble strip, and that could be a different color, different texture. We all have seen those types of sort of divider surfaces. So, that's what we would, we would propose in, in terms of those conditions, and that's the extent of those changes in conditions. And lastly is the request for a Water Resources District special permit, which would encompass both properties, and we can get into that discussion shortly. What I'd like to do is turn the discussion over to Chris Barages, who will walk you through some of these improvements in a little more detail. Chris?
Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman and members, for the record, my name is Chris Barages from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams &amp; Barages, and I'm going to be referring to, to the site plan set for, for my discussion. And I'll sit down just briefly, just so that everyone can see the, the two plans. The plan that's colored up on, on the left-hand side is the, represents the existing conditions, so the plaza. You can see the, the building is in, is in brown, and the paved parking lot in, in front of the building is in, is in the gray color. And the portion of the, of the driveway in the rear of the building that's currently in disrepair and has a gravel surface is, is colored in a darker gray or, or slightly brown color. We also identified, for the purposes of this discussion, the limits of the wetland, which is shown in a dark green color, most easterly, just off of the paved surface in the back, which is very close to Penbrook, which runs across the back of our property line from south to north in this fashion. We've also shown a hundred-foot buffer zone, which is a wetland in the, or a hundred-foot area, just to identify the wetland resources that, that are on the property. The existing septic system for the, for the plaza is in the existing green area that's located on the western side of the site, located here. It's fed by a series of septic tanks that are in the rear of the building that go to a pump chamber, and periodically wastewater is pumped up to bleaching area. The, the septic system in its current form was last upgraded in nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, and since then, some of our wetland resources in the rear of the property, and the way that we identify limit, the limit of the riverfront area have changed slightly. So, portions of the existing bleaching area no longer comply with the local Board of Health regulations with setback from, from wetland and, and wetland resources. Similarly, if we travel westerly across the property line between sixty-four seventy-four and sixty East Main Street, this is the property boundary for sixty East Main Street, which consists of a single-family home with a gravel driveway that's shown to the right, a couple of outbuildings. It's also obviously serviced by a septic system, and the remaining portion of the yard is vegetated either with, with lawn or trees or shrubs. There's extensive landscaping along the property line between the Georgetown Plaza and sixty East Main Street. As Attorney Smolak mentioned, the proposal for expanding into sixty East Main Street has changed the configuration of what we had last presented to the ZBA. Just flip that, let me have it to the next sheet here. And so, in the proposed, the proposed condition, as Attorney Smolak alluded to, we have changed very little of what's going, what's being proposed behind the building. We're removing two thousand square feet of existing paved surface in the area, this area here closest to the river, and replacing it with a pervious pavement. And as part of our notice of intent application to the Conservation Commission, we're proposing to extend that pervious pavement around the entire back of the property, and then the return, taking us through, if you will, some of the resource areas. The pervious pavement is going to allow us to do a few things. It's going to allow us to eliminate the need to continually have to fix potholes that form in the gravel driveway, which also cause and lead to sedimentation into the Penbrook. In addition, it's also going to provide for a significant amount of infiltration through that surface into, into the groundwater regime, especially, depending what time of the year it is, we'll have more infiltration. For instance, in the summertime, it will allow quite a bit of rainwater to infiltrate back into the ground, not as much in the springtime, given our high groundwater conditions. The site, as you can see where the existing septic system is, existing septic system is, is right above here. If you recall, we, the previous plan had proposed expanding this existing septic system area towards the front of the site before this, this property was, was, an agreement was entered into. And we had extended the septic system here, and if you remember, we had created a parking field on top of the septic system, and that required us to, to construct really a, a pretty, pretty high wall all around it, almost on three, on three sides, except for an access driveway that was, that was going to allow folks to travel into this big parking field here, in and out, back at this location. But on the three remaining sides, all the way up to the street front here, in order to honor grading activity at the property line, the, the retaining walls would have had to have been constructed. And at their highest point along the property line here between sixty and sixty-four, there were a couple of places where the retaining wall could get as high as seven to eight feet. And by acquiring, or adding this property to the project, what it really allows us to do is sort of spread out a little bit, and by spreading out, it really reduces significantly not only the number of retaining walls that are needed, but the height. We will still need a couple of retaining walls, and really what's driving, what drives this site is, is how shallow the groundwater is. Groundwater, in our test hole program on sixty East Main Street, we encountered it. It was very similar to what we encountered on, in the plaza. All the soils were very similar, very, very sandy, and in many cases, it looks very much like beach sand, fine sands, medium coarse sands, but the groundwater is only two feet below the surface, and that's estimated seasonal high groundwater based, based on modeling. And so, what, what we're proposing to do is to create a septic or a bleaching area that's going to consist of an innovative alternative technology called the Presby System or Presby Environmental.
Can you spell that?
Sure. Presby is spelled P-R-E-S-B-Y.
Thank you.
And the way this system works, it's still a bleaching area, and these are, we're proposing to have two, two areas where wastewater will be pumped up into the bleaching field, and it will alternate between one side and the other each time the system pumps to it. By spreading out the site too, it, it allowed us to, to, to do something that the Conservation Commission had asked us to do, but we really, our hands were tied with the previous plan. That is, we're, now we can move the septic tanks out of the buffer zone to the wetland, and so, the septic tanks and pump chamber will be able to be moved outside of this black line, and that's something that the, the Concom had asked us for previously. Similar to the previous, to the existing septic system, we have a series of septic tanks here where solids will settle out and then overflow into a pump chamber. Inside pump chamber, there'll be two pumps, and every time wastewater rises to a certain level, one of the pumps will kick on, one of the pumps will pump exclusively to this side and the other to the other side. What that allows us to do is not to overload the bleaching area, and it also allows us to, if we have to service one of the pumps, we have the ability through closing and opening some valves to alternate between the two fields with only one pump during a repair situation. So, getting back to the site grading requirements, we're going to need, we will need a couple of retaining walls, but much shorter than before. And I'm pointing over to this point, you'll notice that we haven't really highlighted the existing house as being saved. That little, that little revision is shown on this plan over here. And so, I'll just hop over here real quick to show you that the, the short retaining wall that we're going to have across the front of the septic system here is going to be needed just to support a driveway that'll allow two cars to, to go back and forth with two-way traffic. It's a short retaining wall, only three feet high. Later on in my presentation, I'll just, I'll briefly go over the landscaping plan, this landscaping proposal in front of the short wall. Similarly, from the rear to the rear, where our grading comes close to the property line, this other commercial operation here, I think it's the, on the telephone property, we also have a retaining wall along the back of the property here. But on the east side or, and the west side, there are no proposed retaining walls, it's just going to swoop off, and it's supposed to be planted and maintained as grass on top of the septic system. We'll go into that a little bit later, the proposal, working with Mr. Chris Huntress from Huntress Associates, our landscape architect for the project. We're proposing to plant this area with a wildflower mix, which you may have noticed on, on your color, color renderings. I'm going to just stand up now, just a little bit here. I wanted to go into stormwater management slightly because it's... I wanted to go into stormwater management slightly because it's definitely a significant improvement overall we have for the existing condition. Our plan for stormwater management really hasn't changed as far as what types of best management practices we're proposing to use. The stormwater, as it hits the pavement, is going to be directed to a biofilter or treatment soil that's going to accept stormwater in the back of the site here. And so as stormwater flows across the pavement and heads out towards the back, similarly in this fashion here, water will first come to the pervious pavement portions of the park, of the parking area or the paved area, where there'll be some infiltration and treatment, and then any additional stormwater will flow over and enter this treatment soil that's going to be planted with various wetland plants that are described and shown on the landscaping plans before overflowing, if you will, to an existing stormwater management area located here, and out to some existing treatment soils before going on to the wetland and eventually to Pen Brook. In the existing condition, there really are several areas along the existing park and driveways here that where rainwater just flows off of the property without any treatment at all. And so by incorporating these best management practices, we've been able to show through our drainage calculations that the proposed improvements comply with DAP's stormwater management regulations. Our previous design, we already had gone through review and approval, and we're very close to tying things up with the conservation commission's reviewing engineer on topics related to the wetland line and stormwater management. We're going to be back in front of the commission presenting this revised plan on Thursday night. Moving on, I wanted to change gears a little bit, and since we were talking about stormwater management, Mr. Chairman, if I could go through the water resources permit discussion. Both of the properties lie completely within the water resource protection district. It's a little bit odd, we don't usually run into a situation like this. This water resource protection districts or groundwater protection districts are usually tied to delineated Zone 2s to public water supplies for wells. But I know in Georgetown, there are some additional protections put in place in certain areas that are not directly associated with the areas that directly provide groundwater recharge into the town wells. So it's a little bit unusual, but it looks like the regulations mimic what one or two in some other towns in a Zone 2 or in a Zone 3. And so because these properties completely lie within the water resource protection district, we had to file this application. And its purpose, I believe, is primarily to ensure that the proposed uses are not going to propose any activities that would promote contaminants from any of their potential hazardous water or into the groundwater. And so we went through the bylaw, and if I could just go through the application very quickly. There are a total of seven items on the application form that ask questions about, I'll start off with number one, which is related to listing all chemicals and pesticides, fuels, and other potential toxic or hazardous materials to be used or stored. We identified on our application that there are no toxic or hazardous wastes to be stored on site. The second question was describing the potentially toxic or hazardous waste to be generated, indication of storage and disposal methods. We identified that limited amounts of medical waste associated with a doctor's office would be generated in the medical office, rent space in the existing condition on the property. And any medical waste that's generated in the medical office would be managed in accordance with these, what is called state regulations regarding the disposal of medical waste. And really, all we're talking about here in a regular doctor's offices, sharps containers, and possibly some small wastebags where they come in to collect the trash, they're collecting in special bags and taken off-site. Number three talks about if the application wants to know if any industrial wastewater treatment disposal will occur on the site. And of course, in our case, there is no industrial treatment of water, wastewater, and no system greater than 15,000 gallons per day. The proposed size of the septic system to support this building, as shown in its current configuration, is a 6,000 gallons per day septic system. My next question-
What's the original, the current system?
The existing design of the existing system?
Yeah.
The existing system was designed for just over 1,500 gallons a day.
Thank you.
Question number four asks whether or not underground storage of hazardous or toxic materials would take place on site, and our answer was that no underground stores or toxic or hazardous materials are planned to occur.
Sixteen, six thousand.
The question number five on the application request today that the analysis certified compliance with the zoning bylaw section be prepared by technically qualified expert, and I'll just go over to the letter that I prepared. I was the author of this letter. Just for the record, I'm a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth with a bachelor's and a master's of science in civil engineering, a certified soil evaluator with over 25 years' experience with civil site design, landfill closure work, and assessment work and construction oversight. There are specific things that we were supposed to speak to in the zoning bylaw related to this, the preparation of this letter. One was safeguards, and I'm just going to read from the letter briefly that regarding the house at sixty East Main Street, the existing residents, there are no toxic or hazardous materials stored outside of the existing home, including natural gas, therefore no fuel deliveries of petroleum products occur. Some household cleaning products stored inside the home, materials stored in closed containers. Went on to comment that any waste that's generated is typically municipal solid waste that's handled by deliveries to the local transportation. Regarding the existing commercial building, sixty-four to seventy-four, again, there are no toxic or hazardous materials stored outside of the building. The fuel that's delivered to the, that supports this plaza is also natural gas, so there are no deliveries of petroleum products to the property. And similarly, there are a few household cleaning products that are stored inside the building, in some of the office spaces. The physical therapy, the medical office, and the Dunkin' Donuts all have cleaning products that are also stored in closed containers. And similar to the residents, there are existing dumpsters, and the trash, if you will, that's generated is considered municipal solid waste, so no generation of any hazardous waste or materials. We also described that there are materials that are generated in the medical office that are considered medical waste, and we included a comment, the minimum requirements for the management of medical bylaw, which are those state regulations that are referred We verify that the entire subject property lies within the water resource district. And regarding disposal, we commented that there are no toxic or hazardous waste in any of the site operations that fall under the jurisdiction of the state's hazardous waste regulations. And then regarding drainage, we commented that the proposed site improvements provide a significant increase in the amount of infiltration from the impervious surfaces through the use of pervious pavement and the grass channels that eliminate much of the direct discharge of stormwater runoff into Pen Brook, which I talked a little bit about earlier. And again, that the new stormwater management system has been designed to comply with DAP's stormwater management regulations. There are only a couple more questions that we answered on the application form. There was a question regarding showing what areas of the site flow into the floodplain district. We know that Pen Brook has a floodplain associated with it, it's mapped by the federal government, and we show the limits of that flooding on the property. And of course, our watershed map that we prepared clearly shows that all of the site flows in that direction, you know, towards Pen Brook. We needed to submit an updated certified list of the bars, which we did. Before I go on to the landscaping plan and describing a little bit about that, Mr. Chairman, are there any questions about the water resources permit?
Don't, not with regards to that. I just, what was the first proposed septic size? You're at 6,000 per day, right? That's your new proposed. What was the one before that?
Right, the one before that, we were, it was approximately 27 or 2800. Don't quote me on that, I'd have to take a look.
That's fine.
Twenty-seven hundred, was it?
It was right in that ballpark.
Fifteen to 27, that just stuck in my head.
Before, before Chris goes into landscaping and to give him a break, I just wanted to just touch upon the issue of parking on the site. In the materials, and actually, as you may recall from our last hearing, there was a question raised as to parking utilization for the site. And so in the materials that we submitted in the application, I put together a memo that was dated January 27th with a table for parking.
Yes, thank you.
And so I think it really is helpful to illustrate the real demand or hardship we have with respect to parking on the site. In taking a look at the four scenarios, we looked at existing conditions with the current tenants that we have at the property, and with those tenants, that space adds up to about little, maybe close to about half of the space in the building. So we're a little less than 50% occupied, but the spaces that are required under zoning take up 58 spaces as required under zoning, and we only have 62 current spaces on the site. So basically, with the exist, we're about maxed out on parking today. Then we looked at the second scenario, which was if we were to keep the, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts facility and made everything else medical office, we'd be up to 120 parking spaces. What we're proposing is 111 parking spaces both, on both parcels. So we still couldn't, you know, max it out with medical office. We do note that, as you know, we do have medical office uses in the property. Then we looked at a couple of more likely scenarios in addition to the Dunkin' Donuts and medical office. The auto-driving school, maybe a neighborhood cafe, maybe a nail salon, maybe some other retail. And we came up with, which was proposed, alternative three, which I guess is more medical office than proposed under, you know, currently proposed, but still a diverse set of uses. And we come up with a proposed number of spaces of 99. And then we have a last scenario, which is proposed condition number four, I guess you call it, or condition number three, alternative three, which includes a Dunkin', medical office, a cafe. And that, and the cafe is what takes up all of the space, and that comes up to 110 spaces where we're proposing 111. So I think that probably gives you a good feel for where we stand with parking today, and also the fact that at 50% occupancy, you know, it's very difficult to make this operate well, to make the improvements, to attract quality tenants that we really want to attract to this property. So again, I just wanted to make sure we discussed that a little bit, because it is an important factor in our need for additional parking. If I ask?
Please, please, yep. I don't want to get into questions quite yet necessarily, but just on parking, just to clarify your design. On the, I guess it's the east side, which would be the top of the page, the parking spots behind the building essentially.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at the other one, but either one is fine.
I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah. Are any of those new, or are those all existing in your new?
They're all, they're all new, unchanged from the previous middle.
So let me rephrase the question. You're adding any parking back there based on, as compared to what's there today?
Yes.
Legitimate parking. There is space out there, but it's not delineated or anything like that.
No, I understand. So, but in your, this doesn't include any of that parking? In other words, you've got-
Well, the existing conditions-
Of the 62 spaces you have now.
They're all in this area.
They're all in that area.
Yep.
And how many are out back, 16 or something?
Probably like, yeah, 15, 16.
Yeah, there are three spaces in this area. I don't know the number here, it looks like it's about eight or so. Then we have 20-plus odd, there are like 39 additional spaces basically on the plaza site. And then, and as I was mentioning before, this is the dividing line of the property. And so what we have here is an additional 10 spaces here on sixty East Main Street to get to your 111.
Okay.
But you actually have two, so there's 12 when I count here, unless I'm counting wrong. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Oh, in the illustration?
Twelve. Yeah. Is that really only supposed to be 10, or is there 12 there?
Right, it's, the site plan and the last thing I've been planning-
Correct.
That, that pretty picture there, which was the aerial view, showed lines that didn't quite match the site plan.
Okay, so these are really only supposed to be 12?
That's right.
I mean 10.
10.
10.
So it's more of an illustration to show what's out there, and the site plan is more detailed, so.
But to answer your question directly, the width of the existing conditions in the rear of the building. So this existing, this existing width here, we have to, we have to change the shape of this in order to accommodate parking spaces and be able to have the town's fire-
Right, okay. Yeah, good.
-to get back here. Without changing the shape of this and adding some additional impervious surfaces closer to the building, we couldn't support legitimate parking spaces and honestly be able to just, you know, to drive that ladder truck around.
Okay. Obviously, there's more going on than just adding the parking with the design, and I can clearly see you've got the pervious surface in there. I just want to understand what's feasible back there.
Sure. One of the other things that I didn't mention about the parking in the rear is, another request by the commission was, is there any way that you can pull impervious surfaces further away from the wetland and the edge of the river in the back? And we were, we did pull, we did pull back, so the paved surfaces are a little bit closer to the building, so we did shrink that driveway width a little bit from what's there today.
So, yeah, continue with the landscape plan.
Sure. So as I mentioned before, Mr. Christian Huntress, our landscape architect, registered landscape architect, was planning to be here tonight. He was traveling, and his flight got delayed coming back to town. He was planning to be here to do the presentation, but we've been working very closely, you know, sharing AutoCAD drawings and making sure that our plans jive, if you will. Initially, we had prepared the landscaping plan because there really wasn't a lot of plantings proposed, other than the ones that were related to stormwater management, which certainly, you know, we've designed things like that all the time. When the adjoining property came into the picture, Mr. Scirvanos decided to bring on a landscape architect to try to see what other, what other things we could add to the plan. And so we came up with the plan that was presented in our recent filing. So starting with the stuff that I'm most familiar with, I mentioned that the plantings that are wetland-related in the back of the property associated with treatment soil, they consist of a series, a series of high bush, blueberry, sweet, summer sweet cleft shrubs, and a conservation mix that would allow some wetland-type vegetation to grow along the rear. That was very important to the conservation commission. Again, the other big change, of course, is moving our septic system over to the adjoining property, which, let's see, this plan I think shows it the best. So I mentioned the plantings of wildflowers on top of the area that's going to be associated with the septic system. These images, if you will, were also prepared by Mr. Huntress and show what that sort of splatter of color would look like in the area of the septic system. sort of splatter of color would, would look like in the area of the septic system. One of the big things that I tried to accomplish by, by taking and moving portions of our improvements onto 60 East Main Street, it gave us a little bit more room to work with. We had very little room to work with between the abutting property and 60 East Main Street on the previous plan. So, we were talking about large fences and ways to shield that high retaining wall with plantings on the abutting property. In this case, we, we graded or prepared our grading scheme such that we're planning to save all of the existing vegetation that's along the property line. These main streets, which is on the corner here, that's these existing trees that are along the main street. Mr. Huntress is proposing to add or fill in one of those trees, some additional plantings consisting of some Colorado blue spruce, four plantings of evergreens, because there are some dangerous foliage trees along the property line there. And then, similarly, there was a proposal to plant some, some other shrub, shrub-related plants next to the spruces. Shifting gears, front of the site, parking field that's shown here, the plan was to have a very attractive landscape-type wall that had some kind of a stone, stone face that, that's this, the portion of this retaining wall, that's, that's three feet high here along the parking spaces. And then, in front of the, in front of that wall, Mr. Huntress had a proposed, a planting, a series of junipers. The specific species was a sergeant juniper, which would allow us to fill in the gap between the retaining wall and the edge of the parking along the front here. Similarly, we're going to have some disturbed areas between the parking and the highway. And the proposal there was, was to continue a picket, a picket fence composite material, continue the picket fence that exists along the front of the existing plaza here, along the frontage of this new parking field, and then across a portion of the front of the existing home. So, that left a few additional areas that were open for some additional plantings. With the creation of a new parking field, we have the ability to, to create some landscape islands. And Mr. Huntress has proposed some tree plantings in those islands and additional shrubs, especially along the front of the property, so that as someone is driving by the proposed property. These are a couple of, a couple of views that, that Mr. Huntress modeled, traveling, if you will, from the south or from, from 95, coming this way. You first pass the plaza where you can see the proposed, the, the sign here. Dunkin' Donuts is here. You can see the picket fence and the plantings in front of the picket fence. That's, that's sort of the, the look that, that Mr. Huntress was trying to, to establish along that picket fence and along that streetscape. So, and you can see...
You can pick up the, the stone feature?
The stone retaining wall in front of the proposed septic system. That's sort of the kind of stone wall that's being proposed for that three-foot-high section that runs along that parking field. So, I'm not a landscape architect, but we do, we do work together. So, I apologize that Mr. Huntress couldn't be here tonight to do the presentation.
So, again, I think that, you know, in terms of landscaping, particularly as it relates to the Freeman property, by, by leaving the existing house in that location, I think looking towards the plaza, you're probably, they're probably going to see the same thing that they see today with the existing house. Mature vegetation is going to remain in the back of the property, if I can get my pen to work. This mature vegetation is going to remain in the back of the yard as well. So, so that's what we were trying to accomplish in that regard, to preserve the residential feel in the neighborhood by, by maintaining the house in the neighborhood. It does provide a natural screen towards the plaza, if you're looking in this, in this direction. And we also tried to create a landscaped area in this area that's consistent throughout that stretch of, of the roadway, so that you'll have a consistent feel over in that area. Basically, there's a, there's a, I mean, it's going to match the existing fence that's there today. So, so that was the intent. We tried, we put a lot of thought into that and, you know, realized that if we remove the house, I mean, there'd be a lot of plantings that would have to occur and would, I'm not sure we'd be able to accomplish the same sort of screening effect that we would otherwise create by keeping the house, in addition to the fact that it's considered an historic house, so.
Thank you. Board members, we're going to ask, get comments from the audience. Is there any specific clarification questions you want to?
I think I have something that needs to be brought up. So, the existing grade, it looks like the existing grade out there is about 83. Your top of, top of the wall, the retaining wall is about 87. So, that's roughly three and a half, like you're talking. But then, it looks like the top of the, the flower field is at almost 91. So, it's going to hump up above the retaining wall an additional three to four feet.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, there, it's going to be a, it's going to be a shallow, a shallow grade, but it's going to, it's going to have a hump to it, but it's going to be spread out over, over a pretty, pretty long distance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the question in the audience, too, because they're not looking at the plans item.
Okay.
Okay.
I've got some questions, but I'm, they can wait for the audience.
Only to clarify for the audience, if there's something specific you need to know, otherwise, we can let the audience make their comments. Anyone in the audience who wants to come forward? I think you've already got your name on the paper, or, and if you don't, you should put your name on there. Identify who you are, and please address the board directly with any of your comments. So, come on up. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Peter Freeman, 58 East Main. I, I guess, I'm curious, this is, they're asking for variance on 60 East Main? And I, I, you know, there's already an existing business on the other one. So, is it actually, what's the hearing for specifically? Is it a variance on 60 East Main? Or is it a variance on both properties? Or is it a variance, you know, two separate variances?
Can I briefly answer that while we...
Yeah, sure. Go right ahead.
Basically, they're combining into one hearing, a variance request for 60 East Main.
Okay.
Along with...
A special permit for water...
Variance condition modifications.
Okay.
And a water resource, special permit for water resource district on, on the, on the 60, no, 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 64 to 74 East Main. Did I miss anything?
Variance request for 60 East Main then needs to, needs to meet all of the three standards for a variance request?
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay, so it has to have the special soil condition, sthography, all that type of stuff?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. I haven't seen that. I don't know, you know, I know it needs to meet all three of those. I'm wondering if these guys can address that. The other thing, I mean, I understand it's a financial hardship for the building at 64 to 74, but I don't see how it's any financial hardship for the property at 60 East Main, which is the second condition that needs to be met, of the three conditions that need to be met.
That's right.
The, the third, public good, that's debatable, you know, semantics, I'm not going to go there. But those first two, I haven't heard addressed. So, I'm interested to find out what their take on that is.
Can I, should I, before you guys start?
Sure.
I'm quite sure there's a lengthy present, extension of your presentation that's going to address all of the requirements that need to be met for these.
They are in the filing. In the, in the application material, the memo, we did address all those, the criteria, and we could summarize those at some point if you'd like us to do some of that.
I'm just wondering, that may take a little time to go through, because these are good questions, and I had several as well. So, I didn't know if you wanted him to address that before you hear some other comments, or?
It's the...
I, I...
Eleven pages following the first two pages of the application.
Yeah.
So, may I ask, Sharon Freeman, 58 East Main Street, as in a butter. I read the 11 pages.
You're speaking as a...
As a butter, not as a member of the board, I accuse myself. So, I have read the 11 pages, and I, I don't, I wouldn't want to hear that restated, because in my opinion, that did not explain satisfactorily the three conditions that need to be concurrently met.
Thank you. You know what I think we'll do? If anyone, let's go through the audiences, Stu, one at a time. If, if people could be, is, they don't need to be necessarily brief, but make your point, and then, so that then the applicant can address, will just sort of bullet point, address those issues. Anything else that people want to bring, please come forward. Is that fine?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I've got some specific questions that are...
Yep.
Quite similar, so.
I'm going to take all of five minutes of your time. The gentleman behind me is a preservation architect as well.
Yes, could you?
I'm an architect. The gentleman behind me is a preservation architect as well.
Ed, can you just state your name and address and...
Deja, Dan.
What board you're from?
I'm with the, both the historical commission, previous chairman of that, and I'm also on the historical society as a director, and other people in the audience, again, affiliated with the historical society as well. Just to give you kind of a quickie here, in 1638, the Ezekiel Rogers came to Rowley, settled here. When you think back that the pilgrims landed at Plymouth Rock in 1620, that's only 15, 16 years or so after the pilgrims landed here. So, it's a very historical community. There's over 400 houses in town that are dated before 1900. In fact, Georgetown was informed until 1838, and this was known as West Rowley for many years, and that's why there's so many early houses in the area. The six houses that go beyond the site here date from, it's kind of interesting, is, three of them are over 200 years old. The other three are for over 150, over 150 years old. So, you, and you guys kind of hit the bullseye when you selected this, because here's your, here's your shopping center, and here's your, what was known as the town common, and it's Harry Merch Park. Now, we just spent $150,000, thanks to CPA funding on that, to restore that and bring that back to life. We're sort of creeping ever so close to this. And if I took the amount of parking that you have available here and stretched it over here, you're almost doubling the amount of cars that we're going to see when we come into the street and into the historic area of the community. I mean, we're smack here in the center of town, and this is known as the Village District Historic Survey. There's 90 houses you'll see in yellow. Those that are in red have been previously documented. These are on the mass historic database as very prominent, and this ultimately, hopefully, will become one of the historic districts in town, which includes, includes the, the building that we're looking at there. So, we're, we're fiddling with Georgetown's history here. Granted, they're not going to take the house down. I think that's something that is a plus. The rest, I don't think is a plus. I think to, to see double the amount of parking as you're coming down the street is not a big, big asset. From the Realty Trust, page seven, there's a sentence that says, "The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or journeying districts." I turn thumbs down on that one. I certainly will impair the character with, you know, doubling the amount of parking along the street. So, I'm, I'm concerned that we're, even though we're not taking the house down, we're certainly not, not adding to the historic character of the, of the, of that area, of that district. The Harry Merch Park, which I said is a very old complex, began in about 1810. So, that's, again, over 200 years you're, you're facing that. And the less we're going to get into looking at these string of cars, I don't know the, the great view that this guy is going to get when you do save this. He's got the, a wonderful septic system here to stare at, as well as whatever parking is in that direction. And the one thing that really astounds me a bit is, we talked about 1,500 square feet, 1,500 gallons per day in the septic system. So, I said, whoa, what if they double that? That's, that's 300,000. And then, what about if they triple it? These guys are going four times, they're quadrupling the amount of septic system required in this area. And if you had four restaurants or something there, I could say, hey, maybe they're looking to provide facilities for that. To increase the septic system by 400%, it's mind-boggling. The fact that in town also, I think in their report, they, they say they're having a tough time getting tenants. There's a lot of vacancies throughout town. The existing shopping centers are roughly four. We've got the Central Street, Georgetown Crossing. We've got 65 Center Street, which is where the TBS is. Georgetown Plaza, which is the building supply, as well as the other shops and stores in there. We've got the, the Eagle Building on the way to Haverhill, on the, this, so you know that there's so many vacancies now in town on these shopping centers. The Georgetown Crossing one, for instance, has three empty, empty shops now that are vacant. The Eagle Building has two vacancies. It's almost half the building. Plus, there's several vacant buildings smack in the center of town. And if you read your local newspaper, you'll see the Newburyport Daily News just reported that they've, uh, there's three shops, three stores that just closed in downtown Amesbury. And in Newburyport, they're having the same problem. So, it's, it's not the fact that I think you need parking so much, or you need, or tenants are not coming. The reason that tenants are not coming is because we're going through a financial time, which is tough on everybody. And I can see their, their position. They have vacant stores, and it isn't just to this one shopping center. We have these vacant stores throughout town. So, I, I can sympathize with them. You don't want to have a vacant shop there in your shopping center and expect to make a profit at the end of the year. But I think you've got to look around and see what's being done, and what causes something like that to occur.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Yeah, well, yeah, yes, I am sort of, yeah, I'm just want, I, I don't want you to address that specifically unless there's, if there's any other different sort of comments to be made. We, so far, this has been two different things we can talk about. Is there anyone else who would like to mention anything? Please come forward.
Quick thing about it. Ed said a lot of what I was...
Can you please identify who you are, and I think you should probably...
Chris Kamiski. I'm the president of the Georgetown Historical Society. A lot of what I was going to say, Ed already took care of, so I don't have to get into that. But my concern is about the existing building at 60 East Main, and that's that they don't know what they are going to do with it. I would like, you know, I'd much rather hear specifically. But the, the fact is, what it's not going to be, it will no longer be a single-family owner-occupied dwelling. It will be business or rented out. We have had too many instances in our town of non-owner-occupied buildings, and particularly along the main streets, being neglected, falling into disrepair, and ultimately having to be torn down. This is not what we want to see. We want to see this building preserved. So, we feel it would be much better preserved if it remains a single-family owner-occupied building and not rezoned and not made a part of this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi, Steve D'Asisto, Fifteen School Street, Georgetown. I've lived in town for most of my life, and I've seen that parcel there go from a very ugly promos market and terrible liquor store to a very attractive center. And these folks are proposing to make it a little more attractive and a little more efficient so that we can, so that it would be attractive to more tenants. And I think that, you know, they're gonna be putting in, I'm sure, a couple of million dollars to do this, and I, and I, I applaud their investment in town in the same way as the Georgetown Building Supply recently did a tremendous job upgrading their facility. I mean, if you look at these two facilities and you look at what's across the street, I mean, I, I, you know, I can't see why we're having a problem with this. I mean, granted, we need to control things. We don't want Route one fourteen coming through town, but, you know, they're not expanding the building. They're only making it a little more attractive for tenants, and you gotta, and you know something? In this town, one of the reasons why there's so many vacancies in downtown is because there's no parking. And, and it, it's very sad. And that's why the shops and the Union Building are, you know, have a tough time, 'cause there's no parking. And when the state came through and redid everything to increase the traffic value, traffic, you know, through the center of town, you know, it took away all the other parking. It makes it very difficult for, for small business to survive. And that's why you need to add a few more spaces. This, I mean, I don't see any big deal if they clean up the back of that building and put in the, you know, imper- the pervious pavings and whatever to, you know, to accommodate more parking, employees, whatever. It's really, it's really necessary. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please?
Mike, I'm Rick Gatwell. I'm with the Historical Society also as a board member. I just also had a couple of questions that maybe have already been answered, and forgive me if they have. But on the size of the septic system, I was just wondering exactly what it is sized for and why it is that large. The other question is, is there any other possible way you can get the parking off the street and behind on the same sort of property but with a readjusted plan? And the other thing, I, I thought that the septic system undoubtedly includes the, what's necessary for the house as well as, as the store. And I just wanted to be sure that, that was all factored in, as well as a, a way to get access to the house, which I say, I see is from the parking in front. But those are my main concerns in addition to the fact that the house is a very important architectural kind of contributing resource for this area, as well as some of the, there are trees that were in the front of the property as well, I believe, that were kind of specimen trees. I'm wondering if they've been worked around at all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, and the long-term plans for the house, is there any guarantee that that will remain there as whatever the use?
I think you have the floor.
I think just one other comment that I forgot to, to mention. The septic system in town, I've been here four altogether in, in the sixties. The sep- the fact that we don't have a centralized septic system has been a, you don't see any large restaurants smack in town. Seen lots of coffee shops and pizza parlors kind of scattered throughout. But without the septic system centrally located, it's, it's tough for any of these guys to pick up a large restaurant. So I'm saying that, that's a problem that continues to irritate anyone in town that would like to come in and set up shop here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to address most of these comments. I think, you know, the last point made, septic is an issue. I mean, it's, it's a constraint. And yes, there are the vacancies in other spots in, in the town, but, you know, I don't think it's a crime for trying to upgrade the site to attract quality tenants. We wanna get nice restaurants. We don't want large restaurants. We want smaller restaurants. And we can't create those smaller restaurants without additional septic capacity or parking. I think those points were made, really, really support our, our concerns in attracting quality tenants. And so, you know, I, I think they, they make our, our point in that regard. We're, we're trying to upgrade the site. You've seen the proposed facade that we already got approved, and we're trying to upgrade the landscaping to make it a more attractive area. There has been a lot of thought put into trying to make this compatible with historic structures in the area. We're, we're proposing to, to maintain the house. We're trying to be respectful of the neighbors to try to create the screening, and that's why we tried to shrink the, the septic to the rear to maintain those large trees in that area. And so we, we've put a lot of thought into this, and, and I hope you realize that we, we've tried to accommodate it based on our last hearing where a larger retaining wall wasn't, wasn't necessary. We're, we're trying to keep this plaza surviving. And I wasn't around when this property was acquired by this owner back in nineteen ninety-eight, but from what I understand, this, this plaza was not really a pretty site. And so the, the operator has, has tried to, to upgrade the site, and I think you, you see that we're trying to make those efforts. In terms of just some of the other comments that we hear, I think that in terms of the existing house, we're planning to keep the house from the exterior point of view the same as you, what you see today. We're looking at possibly residential and/or office use. We're trying to keep our options open with respect to that house, because we wanna make sure that it's occupied and it isn't vacant. And that's why we're trying to keep our options open. We're not trying to create a use that's gonna be noxious or offensive to a butters. If it was a business use, it would be, you know, something just general office, maybe a lawyer's office or accountant's office, something innocuous so that we don't have a high-intensity overnight use with a lot of parking. Because we simply can't afford to create a use that, that requires a lot of parking for the site. And so that's the intention.
Can I, can I stop you for just a second?
Yeah.
And I don't wanna get, lose your train here, but there's nothing that I've seen in your application regarding, in the variance request
Mm-hmm.
Relating to the use of the house. The variance request relates to the proposed changes to the site, which include
Right.
Non-residential parking, septic
Right.
Upgrades.
Right.
That's what the variance request is for. And to just clarify, I heard somebody suggested that this was being rezoned. There, there would be no rezoning of that lot, even if a variance were granted. The variance would specify the use that would now be allowed on that lot. The lot would still be zoned residential, and as far as I know, and you can clarify this, the application does not suggest any other use for that, for that structure.
So Yeah.
It would have to be residential, I assume, unless you've got something that you, you'd like to change here. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you wanna address that, that would, that would be fine.
Well, as I said before, we did address the, the criteria in, in the application. We thought we had clearly addressed those items. But I think that, you know, in terms of, I'll just summarize how we, how we feel we meet the criteria. We're treating this site as a single lot. We're treating sixty East Main Street as an extension of sixty-four seventy-four East Main Street. So in terms of what you've heard this evening, you've heard the fact that basically the large expanse of the wetlands on one side of the site and to the rear of the site, the shallow groundwater, the, the extensive area of waterfront area are all factors that relate to the soil shape or topography. So we feel that we more than adequately addressed that criterion, because there are those, the special circumstances related to the site. In terms of involving substantial hardship, financial or other, I think we've indicated that basically this site is really constrained by the parking and the septic. And so in order to make this a viable site, that's more than fifty percent occupied and that has diverse sets of uses, we need to have those additional amenities to make the site work. And so without those amenities, I'm not sure you're gonna see much of any change to what you have out there today, and it may become worse, because we need the revenue from new tenants and quality tenants, 'cause that's what we're looking for, quality tenants of the site, to make the site work from a financial perspective. And so, again, to, to be able to utilize the space, to be able to utilize all the existing space, we're not creating a new building area. We need to have additional parking capacity, and we need to have additional septic, septic capacity. If we wanna have restaurants or cafes, you know, hopefully that are quality types of tenants, we need to have additional septic capacity. Otherwise, we're not gonna be able to accommodate them. We don't wanna have a site that's a hundred percent medical office. We wanna have something that's a little more diverse, so it contributes to the downtown, so it will attract people to the downtown. But without those expansion or without those uses, I think that we have a real financial issue with respect to maintaining the continued viability of the property. And lastly, the, you know, I, I guess it's been discussed already, and that's the, that the desired relief can't be granted without substantial detriment. I don't think there's a substantial detriment to this proposed layout with the addition of the refacing of the building, providing the additional landscaping, maintaining the existing historic house, providing landscaping to, to buffer and to soften the changes in the elevation. We're doing all that we can to, to mitigate the impact to this neighborhood. We're keeping, we're not creating any new buildings. We're creating, you know, a, a septic area, but it's gonna be a, a grassed area, it's going to be a landscaped area. So you're gonna see landscaping in the center of that, of that property. But we do need the parking. So I think we do, I guess it's criteria. I mean, it's, the use of the property would include the use of the, of the existing house. I mean, that's, that's a revenue, revenue generator for this use. We're potentially paying a lot of money for that particular lot, and we need to make sure we can be able to justify that with a return, which would be a revenue generator, whether it's either keeping it as an existing residential use or, or providing some sort of innocuous office use. That's not, as I said, not high intense, high intense use. It's something which, you know, the lights are shut off at normal business hours. That's what we're, that's what we're aiming for, achieving, trying to achieve.
So just to be clear, what you're suggesting is any use that's currently allowed by the variance at sixty-four to seventy-four East Main would then automatically apply to the other lot? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I'm not saying essentially that, no.
You're saying you're gonna be treating this as one's?
No, no, I'm not.
I just wanna be clear what you're asking for here.
Yeah, sure.
'Cause there's a lot of
I think, I think we would be looking for
I didn't see anything about the use of the house.
Correct, correct.
So I wanna be clear.
Correct. No, you're correct. I, I think that what we're looking for is either a residential use or an office use for, for that particular house.
Okay, but you haven't asked for that in your application.
Well, I'm asking as part of this hearing right now.
All right.
Correct.
Where's the park?
I got lots of questions and comments, but I just wanna make sure I'm clear as to what you're asking.
Sure.
Where is, where would the additional parking be for sixty if, in fact, it were office use slash residential?
Sure. So the parking field that's directly adjacent, adjacent to the, to the house would let me get that.
Oh, sure. Here you are. Thank you. So with, with the revised site plan, the parking that's closest to the house would be this, this parking field here. So we're also providing a handicap space with handicap access to those.
So the new, some of the new spaces that are created would go, would be dedicated to sixty?
Absolutely.
You're done away with the driveway completely?
That's correct.
Can I ask a question too?
We're gonna, we're gonna let the board ask it some questions, and then, and then the audience will have another opportunity to ask some specific questions.
So I personally think the extension of the parking is a detriment to the neighborhood. Has there been any thought of one-eighting or ninding it, so it's here instead of here? So really, the impact would only be the length of a car.
Can you, can you point out where, when you're like, we
Talking about back-to-back?
Yeah, instead of having it go this way along
Yeah.
Here, it could go back too. So these two are parking.
I see.
So the, I can, I can quickly answer that. One of the things that we were trying to do here is, is limit the height or the use of retaining walls. There physically, there physically isn't, isn't enough room to support the septic system, another, another road parking and an aisle that you would have to have, see, it's eighteen feet plus another twenty-four feet for the aisle width in order to, to accomplish that without, without the use of retaining walls and, and probably cutting down the size of the septic system.
I just feel like with, with the hump, I mean, you're talking about still seven foot, like, it's not a retaining wall, not a seven-foot retaining wall. There's still a seven-foot difference in elevation from this road to the, to the top approximately. So would, if you left all the beautiful trees that are already there, there's one evergreen specifically that's, it's gone in this, I mean, that kinda hides the hump from the view of the street. So if there was a way you can tweak that, I think it would possibly, I'm not gonna, I, I don't know. I think it would just look better. 'Cause the landscaping there is already, I mean, it's already beautiful. You've done a great job. I, I always say it's the best lawn in Georgetown.
Whereabouts is that evergreen in relation to the proposed parking area?
It's, 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 oh, yeah, the house.
Georgetown Street.
I'm just trying to figure out whether it's, it's within an existing space or spaces.
Oh, it's definitely, you, yeah, you've
Or whether it occupies the entire area.
There's a song about it. So I don't know if you need six thousand gallons per day. It seems, I don't know what's driving that. That was one of the questions that somebody asked too. Maybe forty-five hundred for, that's just, that's how I feel.
Just to follow up on that, I think you did
Well, I think if these last two spots were left, because that's where the tree is, right?
That's right.
And you move those over. You just take the two instead of this way, you put them up against where the septic is.
What are you saying, like, taking those ten, five, five?
By, by side. So still leave these two where, where, where the tree is. And there's your screen, and then you just move the two over. So they're facing, they're facing the side of the house.
So then you're still taking a chunk out of where their septic is? You kind of, 'cause you would be moving them here, right? Is that what you're saying, Dave?
We're trying to tuck them in, tuck them in somewhere so that we can save.
Facing the side, they're like this right now, facing the street. Move them up and move them parallel to the septic, to the field. And you might be able to save the tree.
So then you're not on the street.
They're not on the street, they're behind the tree.
That's something we can, we can, we could take a look at.
I, no, I think you should get into it.
Yeah.
I think you should go ahead, Jeff.
Me?
Yeah. Well, I think somebody else had a question.
Well, did you ever answer what, what's driving the six thousand gallons per day?
Yeah, my, my comment on, on the septic was gonna be, you had a table that was very well laid out, and I appreciate it on the parking situation.
Yeah.
We get a really good idea of what, what drives what.
Need a car with a septic.
I'm trying to understand in my mind how the, how the, and it was right, you got a four-fold increase in septic. Is that driving the occupancy as much as the parking or vice versa, or, or, or what? 'Cause I, I see the, the analysis, which is, unless I'm missing something, there's nothing in here about septic law.
Not, not in this table, but the answer to your question is, is very much so. If I, I can quickly pencil, pencil in some flows here, maybe while we address another question.
Well, in, in general, is, is it parking that's primarily driving, driving your occupancy?
It's both. It's both septic.
So why did it increase, why did it double from the last time you were here?
Because we didn't have the ability to go to six thousand, six thousand gallons per day, given our site constraints, without the use of sixty East Main Street. We were really, we were really We were really, we were really handcuffed.
But your, but your footprint doesn't change.
That's correct.
So how does it double?
They can open up the uses. It gives them a lot more possibilities.
Restaurant uses or higher intensity uses and gallonage, that's what we're trying to, you know, ideally, we'd love to attract that type of use.
Has it been discussed the possibility of tearing half the building down and turning it into parking? I'm not even joking. You have a lot of vacant land and a lot of vacant area. Take a third of the building down and make it parking. Because I'm personally either, I'm not, I didn't move to Georgetown to continue to encourage strip malls and things like that. It's not what I'm interested in, and I'm only one person, that's why there's a board here. But I'm not interested in expanding parking along East Main. Not at all what Georgetown needs right now, personally. So that's another possibility. Get full occupancy and you get your parking.
That's the first time I've ever heard that.
I can't pay, you're not making any money on empty space, you're not making any money on rental space, so...
If I may, can I, can I speak?
Go ahead.
You don't get paid who you are, please.
It's okay, Roseanna Francis, I'm here on behalf of the owner. Being the person who manages his entire real estate portfolio, we get calls, I mean, weekly, that people who are interested in leasing space at the plaza. We are constrained by the septic because, for instance, and Chris can quote the gallons, like a nail salon, you use a lot of septic. The doctors use a lot of septic. A restaurant would use a lot of septic. So that's why right now, we're very limited. So we have the Triad Driving School, because they don't use a lot of septic, so that's great. So we found a tenant that fits, but it's very limited as to how many tenants don't use septic.
Oh, I, I understand entirely.
So to, I mean, so I understand there's vacancy all around town, but it's amazing to me that we don't market this plaza and we get calls. We have other plazas, we can't get a call to save our life, brand new, we market and nobody calls us.
Well, certainly.
So it's a very attractive spot for small business to come in. So I just wanted to speak just from a real estate perspective, that there is interest to be there, and that's why, that's why there's this drive for us to make it as accommodated as possible.
Sure, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, if we take a look at, so we have the existing scenario on the parking table, and then three proposed, proposed scenarios.
Sure.
The second proposed scenario, which is, which calls out the Dunkin' Donuts medical office at roughly 8,000 square feet.
Wait.
Proposed scenario number two.
Okay.
The park, the parking memo?
Yep.
It, all of the scenarios have the Dunkin' Donuts component. Medical office at just over 8,000 square feet, the auto driving school at 1291. And the cafe, which is a 50-seat cafe. The retail at 3,000 square feet, a nail salon at 1,000. So if I go through the numbers, Dunkin' Donuts is 1,000, 1,000 gallons per day, is the current Title V requirement for, the minimum size for a fast food restaurant. The medical office at 8,000 square feet, which is about more than double the square footage that is currently in place now, you're looking at about 10, 10 doctors, and they base their flow on 250 gallons per doctor per day. That would be 2,500 gallons. The cafe, a 50-seat cafe has a higher flow requirement than fast food, because it's considered sit-down, folks usually stay a little bit longer. The requirement is 35 gallons per seat per day. When you multiply that by 50, that's 1,750 gallons per day. The nail salon with 1,000 square feet, roughly three chairs. DP assigns a flow for beauty salon, nail salon at about 100 gallons per day per seat. So that's, that's 300 gallons. And the retail at 3,000 square feet, that's the least, the least, the smallest user of septic space, because they have the largest amount of space with the smallest septic needs. For, for, for any kind of a space, it's based on the square footage, and it's based on a flow of 50 gallons per day per 1,000 square feet. When you run those numbers for that 3,000 square feet of retail, it's only 150 gallons per day. But if we add up all those numbers...
Can you skip the driving school?
Sure, driving school is, is, we consider that office a little bit more intensive than retail, but not rising to the level, let's say, of a beauty salon, that sort of thing. So that septic flow is 75 gallons per 1,000 square feet. So at 1291 divided by 1,000 times 75, that's, call it 100, 100 gallons per day. So, so 1,000 plus 2,500 plus 100 plus 1,750 plus 150 plus 300, we're up at 5,800 gallons per day for that scenario.
Okay.
We can run, I can run through the...
No, it's clear.
Right.
It actually runs pretty much the same ratio as parking. It makes sense, more people, more septic, more people need more parking.
You know, we've talked to residents, residents in town, you know, our office, you know, we know a lot of folks that live in town, families, that sort of thing. There's no place that you can go to and sit down and have a nice meal at a restaurant, you know, a nice restaurant. We want to attract, Mr. Scavranos wants to attract somebody like that. You know, we just can't, we can't support another restaurant. This plaza cannot support the Dunkins and another restaurant of any kind.
We got three vacant restaurants in town now, so it's hard to leave a Dunkin' on your door, because there's...
I think you, the town is lucky to have somebody like Mr. Scavranos who's willing to, he's, I mean, this is a lot of money. Sometimes I wonder, you know, but he's thinking, you know, long-term, and is willing to invest, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, to improve, or improve the building and improve the site in order, in order to have a first-class facility.
I mean, we're trying to be, again, very sensitive to the needs of the neighborhood, but on the other hand too, I mean, I would think that you'd want to try to attract quality tenants to this facility, otherwise, it's going to turn, you know, who knows what it's going to turn into if you can't get the revenue to support it, right?
Certainly.
I'm always asking everybody on this board, I'm always proponent of business in Georgetown. I think it's a shame that we have four, like, areas where there's no space. I think we have a restaurant that we can't even find anybody to come in and buy a restaurant that's already got everything you need there. So I am a big proponent of business, but not at the expense of the character of our town. And I feel like right now, that's what you've proposed.
So the restaurants that are there, do they have adequate parking? Are they, do they have limited parking?
But just like we're, it doesn't...
Do they have adequate septic system? I don't know. Do they...
But it's not, that's not part of this hearing.
Right, right.
We're, we're talking about what you've proposed here.
Right.
And that's what I'd like to stick to.
Well, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
This thing's been in use for over 50 years. This plaza has been in use for a variety of uses for over 50 years. Relatively successfully, I would imagine. What happened that all of a sudden, without this variance, you're arguing substantial hardship will be imposed on your ability to attract and secure tenants? What happened, in a nutshell? What's, why, why after 50 years do we need a variance to now?
We can't put electronics manufacturers into this building, which I'm sure would pay a lot higher rent. And you wouldn't want that there.
Have you had one over the last 50 years?
I don't know what we've had here. Do you, in terms of the types of folks?
I've had the right to have similar uses. We cleaned up the uses a couple of months ago to now specifically allow certain things.
Right.
That would give you a little more flexibility on how, who you can attract. Because at that hearing, the argument was, we can't keep going through this, the use request process, because it's taking too much time.
Correct.
We have tenants that come in, they'd love to rent out, but because it's not specifically allowed, we don't have enough time. That was the argument. Okay, we cleaned it up. And you guys recognize that there were some very strict restrictions naturally imposed on this site based on parking and septic. We talked about it.
Right, but that wasn't the only reason we discussed.
Okay, but we granted a clarification on that for, to allow specifically certain uses for you guys to manage as the site is able to accommodate. So again, I just want to go back, because it's just one thing I want to clarify. What happened?
What happened is that in that discussion that we had at the last hearing...
What happened over the last 50 years?
I can't answer the last 50 years.
That requires you now to have a variance without, without which you feel you cannot continue to operate as a viable facility. That's, that's what you're saying in here.
I think Roseanna could probably touch upon that.
Yeah, I mean, with all due respect, so, I mean, we're not saying that we can't ever operate the plaza and this is ever shut down, right?
Well, this is imposing substantial hardship on your ability to operate the facility. That's what you're saying here.
Substantial hardship doesn't mean impossible. It just means substantial hardship.
It's your entire, it's your entire basis for us granting a variance here. It's the entire thing.
But substantial hardship doesn't mean bankruptcy.
It can mean whatever you guys are telling us is going to be.
But with all due respect, whether we've come today, or we came 10 years ago, or came, I mean, I think it's a little unfair to say, why are you here today? We're here today because we'd like to improve the plaza, and we'd like to add more tenants, and we'd like, we are at capacity on septic. We are restricted. So I mean, simply, we're not trying to be jerks, we're not trying to, we're not trying to do anything... But I'm saying, we're not trying to do anything to Georgetown. There's not some suspect motive why we're here today and not 10 years ago.
A used variance is extremely, extremely difficult to justify legally.
Yeah, so we understand that.
Okay, so you understand why I'm trying to...
Of course, of course.
Okay, and to me, this is a convenience. You'd like to attract more tenants. You'd like to fill that building up. The site doesn't allow for it. Okay, we granted in our decision, I can read on and on, the various sections of our decision that clearly stated that you would not expand the intensity of the use, and it was up to you guys to manage these uses that were going to require certain amounts of septic and certain amount of parking within the natural constraints of the site. And as part of our justification for that, we had to go through, you know, what about detriment to the neighborhood? Could this possibly detriment? No, because the site's naturally constricted for these things. So parking, traffic, all these things are going to be limited by the amount of parking they can squeeze in, which is fairly limited, the amount of septic that you can flow. That was part of the justification for the previous decision that we made. So here we are saying, ah, okay, now we got all these uses, let's try to fill up the table as best we can, and in order to do that, we need all this other stuff. So for us to, for me, to get comfortable, there's got to be, first of all, the hardship that you're suggesting applies to 68, if you can get enough, 64 to 74 West Main Street. Okay, there's a whole nother issue of, I'm not sure how you're saying that that hardship now applies to an entirely different lot, but that's, that's another question. I need to understand why, you know, what specifically is going on that this thing can operate for 50 years, and now evidently you've got some real issues here.
I guess I struggle a little bit with the fact that it's, it's not just about us making money. I think there's a benefit to the town to have good, good business and good tenants and services. So I mean, I think that to have, and you heard several people saying, and you all know that there's a lot of vacancies. I mean, I don't know how that benefits the town either. So I think it's a balance, and I, and again, I'm not trying to suggest anything about, you know, discounting the detrimental aspect that you feel exists. But, but there's, there is a balance, and I think we're not just here to make money. There's also a benefit that the town gets from not having, you know, people drive in and see a bunch of vacancies. I don't know that that's a plus.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I understand, and freshening up the place, I mean, we've talked about this before too, that the proposal, I felt that for enhancing the plaza was good. I mean, I, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, if I, if I could respond to your comments as well, as, I'm not sure why this is a surprise when we had the discussion about the septic limitations and the parking limitations at the last hearing, and what we had specifically discussed at that hearing was that we had the ability to secure rights to the adjacent parcel to try to make this project better. And so at the discussion with respect to withdrawal, we withdraw the site, we withdrew the site-specific relief that we were looking for in terms of site improvements, except for the facade of the building, but we also were careful about trying to preserve and to increase the number of uses. I think we discussed at the last hearing that these uses have varying needs for septic systems as well. And so we always, and we communicated at the last hearing, that we were going to come back because we had an opportunity to try to make changes that would lessen the impacts, we thought, to the neighborhood. And so by doing that, we took out the larger retaining wall and we flattened the grade. It's not, it's not completely flat, no, but it's a marked improvement from what we had proposed initially. So, so I mean, again, we're trying to work with you. You don't want to see vacancies in town. We're certainly not going to tear down half the building. I, I understand your concerns, but, but...
I don't know that you do understand my concerns. I really don't, and again, I'm a business as well.
You don't want to see anything changed. You don't want to see that changed. You don't want to see the area changed.
Starting to pull apart the continuity of that downtown strip with those old homes, there's... Towns all over America are doing everything they can to avoid this kind of situation. I cannot believe that you're surprised that I'm surprised. No, this is absolutely... Anyway, for one minute, there's someone's been holding their hand up, and then you're right on. Go ahead, please, can you stand up and, all right, well, we know who you are.
Brickhold Zaffo, I own the house, Cindy and I own the house at 60 East Main, and first of all, we're ecstatic that they want to keep the house in the plan. We're also happy that here that you want to save the Christmas tree, because that is our son's tree. And, but anyway, getting back to your 50 years of, you know, what went wrong. I've lived in town for 40 or so years when that was a supermarket, which went out of business because nobody went in there. What, you know, the meat was turning brown, the building was falling apart, the place was disgusting. Then when the Scavranoses wanted to buy the building and fix it up, we were, as a butters, we were nervous, but it was like a godsend. They turned that whole building around, made it into a beautiful plaza. They did everything we asked as far as landscaping. You know, we had a lot of stipulations. We got the fence, which...
Fell down.
Has fallen down, but, you know, it's been a while. And they haven't fixed it. And they, well, I guess they hope to own it someday. You know, and as far as our house is concerned, we've had people approach us to buy our house without having the house on the market, and every one of them wants to have a business in that house. I run a business out of the house, but it's still a house. It's a resident, it's a home. But everybody that comes to us, you know, we have to say, we're not zoned, commercial. So they, they go away. So we, we can't sell our house to anybody that just, nobody wants to buy that house as a residence only, when you have to look at the napper across the street, and the pool guy across the street, the liquor store, and then we have this plaza around this side of us, which to me is a lot nicer than what's across the street. I'm not against a commercial, you know, business going in there or keeping it like the Bay Bank, Bank of America, whatever it is now. Keep it as an old house, keep it, maintain the building the way it is. I, I just think what they've done, what they proposed to do is, is a good thing. I understand, you know, the parking in the front, I think that's a little ridiculous myself, because who's going to walk that far to go to the building? But, you know, that could possibly be moved. But to have the way it was going to be with a leaching field raised up eight feet, parking on top of that, and then a fence, I think that would have been a real eyesore. This is a much better plan than mine, plus we get to sell our house.
Well, that's, can I speak?
Sure.
I'm Cynthia Hozaffo at 60 East Main Street. The other thing is, when they proposed before, we were so against that, because that really was, to look in our back, be in our backyard and look up at parking lot on top of a leaching field was way beyond what we would want. And so this is really better, and then we came to terms that maybe it was time for us to sell, and that hopefully we would save our home, because we love our house, we love our Christmas tree, and the town loves our Christmas tree. And so, in saving the house, I have a couple of questions, I think like even you people do. Now, the, the septic for the house, that is included in your septic, right? In the, for the mall?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, so the short answer is yes, absolutely, absolutely. So the, the grades work such that we won't have to pump from the house to the, to our, to the new septic tanks. They can flow by gravity into this, into one of the septic tanks.
And it can be incorporated as part of the same system.
Okay, that's really what I, I just wanted to see, because I, I couldn't understand if, um, they were gonna keep the house as a single-family home, or, you know, small office or whatever. Where was the septic to that, or if they decided to split the land, then they would have to put a septic, septic system in. So, that's kinda like what I was thinking about. Is, is there enough room if they decide to split to put another septic, if they wanted to sell the house later?
Well, yeah, there would not be enough room to, once, once that house is tied into that new septic, that's, it will be permanent, there's no room for another septic system if you wanted to turn that house back to residential.
Well, what you could do is, um, is you could always form a condominium and create a, create a condominium for ownership, so you would preserve that style, but just made its obligation would be with respect to the septic system between the two users.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, who, does the board get to determine whether these two lots may be viewed as one? Because if it's one, I understand the three features that are required, but it's not currently one, so who gets to make that determination?
There are two lots. Always be two lots.
There's two.
Not, not necessarily.
There's one lot that has a hardship, there's another that I've yet to see a hardship on the residential, they're both zoned residential.
And so what I'm asking...
They're both zoned residential, one has got special permission to operate for the uses that we've talked about.
And what they're suggesting, I think if I understand, is those two lots be considered as one, and as one being those three.
For the purposes of granting the, the request, I think. I don't know, maybe you've got plans to try to do an A and R or something.
Why would they be two lots if they buy our property? They own both lots.
Okay, you allowed to buy more than one lot in town? Just because they butt each other doesn't mean they're now continuous lots, no.
Doesn't become one big lot.
Oh, it does not, oh, no.
I mean, you, you can, you can perhaps correct on this, but you have a, a lot at sixty four to seventy four East Main Street that has some existing, legally existing non-conforming uses on it. There's an abutting lot that is zoned residential. As far as I know, it's always been used residential. And I've yet to hear, and that's the next part of my question, what is it about the soil condition, shape, or topography of sixty East Main Street that contributes to some sort of hardship at sixty West, East Main Street that prevents sixty eight, sixty West Main, East Main Streets, sorry, from being continued to be used as residential lot? Because there's a nice house there, and it's been a nice house there as long as I can ever remember, and it is zoned residential. And to me, I don't see any possible way that a use variance can be granted on that lot, because I don't see any hardship, and yet you've yet to argue with actually, other than the fact that you think the hardship, you're saying the hardship over here somehow applies to the other lot. So I'd like to get your thoughts on that.
Chairman, my final spot of that. In the memo that I put together, we suggested that we would be combining the lots into a single lot. That happens through the A and R process, through the planning board endorsement process. We would not endorse the plan, get the plan endorsed, only to have a variance denied. So what we would propose is a condition that requires, if we're looking for a hardship based on a single lot, that it would be subject to obtaining A and R endorsement, which as you know is a pro forma endorsement from the planning board, you just have to show adequate frontage, don't even have to show compliance of zoning. So that's, that's, that's our proposal, I mean, that, that's how we establish the hardship for the single lot. It's not, it's not a separate lot, if you view it as a, described in the memo, as a single lot, because we would be proposing to combine both lots. In terms of the parking, uh, one, you know, hearing you out on, on the parking, I think one thing that we could propose is perhaps eliminating the row of parking on sixty, in that area of sixty East Main Street. Would that improve matters in terms of the board, I mean, it would, it would limit, it would constrain us from, from trying to attract a lot of the uses that we're looking for, but on the same side, it's better than what we have today, and so, and it might be better in, in your eyes if we were to eliminate that, that row of ten spaces on sixty East Main Street. And maybe maintain the existing driveway over at sixty East Main Street, which already has the, the paved area behind the house.
It's a tree.
Except that it's a, it's a, it's a gra, it's a, it is a gravel driveway, um, yeah.
The house would be parking, folks, the driveway would be...
So, as in a butter, if, if the, if the piece about the, if the piece about the separate parcels is taken away from the conversation, not by our choice, then, and, and it were treated as one lot, again, not by our choice, as in a butter, I strongly object to those ten parking spaces on East Main Street. But that is precondition on the fact that there's an, uh, external decision that this is one lot. Because I agree with Jeff, I don't, I don't see it.
Does it then, if you have two, no, go ahead, Jeff.
No, no.
Well, what is it then, we have two, two different buildings on the same lot? Which I don't, I thought we weren't, I didn't mean...
I ain't gotta deal with that, which has not come up yet, as far as I can tell.
I, I've discussed that with the billion inspector in the past, and I didn't think we needed relief, but if we do, then it would be, what, a, a ZBA special permit?
Why wouldn't you need relief?
Well, we had discussed it way back when, and I remember discussing it at the early...
No, I, I don't know if I was part, I don't remember this part of the conversation, I mean, you, you wouldn't re, you would not re, need relief for two, two structures on a single lot?
Well, I mean, there's a provision in the bylaws, I mean, I had discussed with the billion inspector, but...
Yeah, no, I know what that says, but...
Sixty five eighty one.
So even if we needed a special permit for two buildings on a lot, it would be back before this board, as a special permit. But I think the billion inspector had indicated that we didn't need one, so...
I'm sorry.
But I don't wanna speak for him.
You may be thinking it's, it's existing. To me, this is completely self-imposed hardship. Especially now when you're sa, you know, you combine that, now, now you got two dwellings on a lot, you're, you're, you're self- imposing. You're creating your own, uh, non-conformity in doing that.
I don't, I don't understand that, um, in terms of how we're creating our own non-conformity. We're, we're combining...
You're saying, you know, that non-conforms, you can't have two, two structures on a lot. So you're gonna make one lot with, out of two, each having a structure on it, you're creating a non-conformity.
So we would apply for, if, if the billion inspector determines that we would need additional relief, we, we would file for that additional relief. Which would be a special permit as opposed to a variance, or it could be a variance.
Add that to the list.
The hardship basically is the fact that you don't have an adequate septic system unless you scoop up that piece of property, that's my feeling, that's the real hardship.
My personal opinion is, if they did not have doctor's offices in there, and a few other tenants that seem to use an awful lot of parking and septic, they don't need a bigger septic system, they don't need more parking. It's their desire, in my opinion, your desire, to max out that facility with tenants that have high parking and septic usages, that's creating your hardship. That's a self-imposed, self-created hardship, and I don't believe it justifies a use variance on a lot next door to, to try and create some, some relief there. And I also believe it, it adds substantial hardship to, you know, detriment to the neighborhood with parking and everything else we've discussed. And I don't think it can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And I also think it derogates from the intent and purpose of the bylaw, frankly, because I think we are here to, uh, to enforce the, the laws of, of the zoning, and that is zoned residential, and I, I just don't see it. That's, that's where I sit right now, so...
Well, if we don't, if we don't, um, have uses that, uh, we're trying to find uses that the market is dictating can be used at the site. We can't, we can't, uh, support a, a building without having tenants. And so if you're suggesting if we go to office...
Because why, you don't have this, how, soil conditions, shape, or topography relates to that, how, you don't have enough space to create the septic system?
No, if you're looking for us to convert it to all office, there's no market for office. And so, I'm just, I'm just...
That's not, that's, that's not our issue, I understand, I appreciate it.
Well, I'm, I'm addressing the issue that you raised, that you suggest we should go to lower intensity uses. What I'm suggesting is that if you go to lower intensity uses, there ain't anyone coming.
You're not going to lower intensive uses, you're just not going to higher intensity uses.
Well, you suggest...
That's what I'm saying, it's always been lower intensity uses.
Well...
You'd like to, you'd like to go to some higher intensity uses, I get it, I, I'm in business, I appreciate that, and I, I empathize with you. But the fact of the matter is that there's nothing that I can see about the soil condition, shape, or topography of a lot contributing to that hardship. Unless you're saying you don't have the space to, to install a septic system on that lot to accommodate it. But size of a lot does not substantiate hardship either. And the soil conditions are the same as the soil conditions in every other lot along that district, so far as I know. So the soil conditions of, of the high water table and sandy soil is not something that's unique to the district. So I, I don't see how we can carve this up anyway legally, that's, but I, you know, you're, you're the attorney, so maybe you can help me figure it out.
Well, I didn't know that you took groundwater tests in all the lots in the neighborhood.
By your own, your, your expert just told us that those two lots had very similar...
That's right, the two lots that we've tested, so, um...
Um, just for the record, uh, do we need to be unanimous on this as well to go to vote? Because we are missing one in the...
Yeah, I don't, I'll stay like that because it's huge. Shouldn't always be four.
Right. Anything else, folks?
I, I think I would, um, I would wanna see what, I mean, what are you gonna do if, if this parking goes away? You'll leave the existing landscaping there, will you still be putting in the retaining wall, I'm guessing you'll need to, in order to support the septic?
Uh, the retaining wall probably goes away, but it would be a balancing act, we, obviously, we, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna remove any of them.
You could feather it.
I don't think so. The, the spruce or the, you know, the large trees, there would be no need to take them down.
Right, and that's what, I guess that's why I was asking the question.
I think that would, I'm not sure that would get to your concern about parking, but...
It certainly is a point of interest, um, and, uh, this board has gone over the past several years, has really tried to be very, much more specific about what a special permit is versus a variance, and that is where Jeff's coming from. We have a real challenge here, uh, just in, in supporting a, a vote to give, grant a variance, because I agree with Jeff, I, I it's so hard to prove, a variance is a very hard to get, and I, uh, it seems like it's primarily financial, that is your hardship, and I, that just, that's what we've been talking about for years now, so I, as much as I would love to see that building be used to its max and, and have the par, I mean, it's great, it is great. I just think that the price is too high, and I, again, don't know if we can, I don't see us granting a variance personally, again, this is where I'm coming from, I, I don't know how to get around that, I don't know whether turning it into one lot, does that eliminate? No, still need a special permit for the other building. If you turn it into one lot, is that...
It's a variance no matter what. I mean, it, uh, subdividing a lot or joining a lot doesn't change the zone.
Who, who decides whether it's one lot?
Besides, they're both zoned residential anyways, so...
Do we decide whether it's one lot, or just planning, just planning?
Planning, they'd have to file an A and R and just...
And that's what you're, you're proposing to do?
Yeah, that's what we would do, and that would be...
Are you doing this concurrently, or are you...
No.
Okay.
No, we, we wanted to get to this point for us, to see where it stood, because of the costs of going to the next step, and so that's why we've, we've taken this first step. And the, you know, the wetland resources were also very challenging on the site, so we also, we did file, and have been working with the conservation commission, because we know that, you know, that's, that was a big focus of the improvements.
And I think there's some great ideas there without, honestly, without going so far as to accommodate the site next door. You can add fifteen or sixteen parking spaces around the back, do the impervious stuff, all of that stuff, I know it's costly, and but it gains you certainly some, some parking capacity there.
I don't think they have the same space, maybe they'll have to do their own septic.
No, I mean, le, leaving the septic alone, we saw a plan the other, you've got, that's why I asked the question. Are those parking spots you've got in the back considered new, or are they part of the sixty, how many did you have, sixty two?
They are not part of the sixty two, they're...
Not part of the sixty two, so without touching the next door, without touching the septic, without touching the lot next door, you can add at least fifteen spots back there, as an example.
We couldn't add any, any more tenants because of the septic.
What's the capacity right now that, that, that septic is using?
You could add another Dunkin' Donuts, only needs a fifteen hundred gallons a day.
That's, that's, that's its capacity.
You could add two more Dunkin' Donuts.
And how much are you using, how much are they using?
It's maxed out.
It's maxed out.
That's not hardship, I don't know what is, but, uh...
Wasn't the existing septic...
Why add more, why add more parking if they can't add any kind of more, any kind of tenant, because they're already at a max, maxed out?
Uh, you're maxed out assuming that you're, you're maxed out even with vacancies, or is that assuming there was retail in those vacancies?
With vacancies, today.
Yeah, they're maxed, they've got fifteen hundred.
They get the medical office in there still, they get high rents of the medical office, and it's taken up all the parking incentive. So, that's the choice they made.
That's the only place in town, it's the only tenant in town.
Well, the Dunkin' Donuts is...
They're calling every day, she says they're calling every day, without even marketing, they're all medical offices are calling.
And she has to say no, 'cause there's no parking, there's no septic capacity, that's the hardship.
I mean, the issue that I would have, biggest issue I would have is with sixty, okay? Trying to join the lots together, eliminating the curb cut. Half the spaces that you're talking about adding, those ten spaces, half of them are gonna end up going to sixty. Right, because there's no other place, if you kept it that, if they kept it the way originally proposing it, all right? There's no other place for sixty to park, except in part of those new places, so...
This is just there.
If we leave sixty the way it is, and if you can reconfigure, or just, maybe you just have to eliminate them, I don't know if you can find any more parking, maybe you can pick up two or three more somewhere else. I mean, I think, um, I'm probably a little bit more flexible, realizing that, yes, you have a situation right now, that, you know, fifteen hundred gallons a day for that size location is not a lot. And maybe way back when, fifty years ago, I mean, I've lived here since nineteen seventy eight, I couldn't remember the name of Primrose though, so... Glad he brought that up, 'cause I've been asked about, about twenty times, but...
Well, that's when cesspools were allowed.
The other thing is, you have to move your septic anyway, because it's in...
Uh, in the, it's okay, because it's an existing condition, but if we, if we wanted to expand the system, we would have to move it out of the, out of the buffer zone to the wetland. So even if we were to add one more gallon to the septic system, we'd have to move it completely, and rebuild the whole thing outside of the buffer zone to the wetland.
What, what were you suggesting, David, and then Nacha, I'm sorry?
Leaving sixty as it is, it's a residential, don't, don't combine the two lots, okay? Eliminate this parking, this strip, this strip of parking. If they can go back and reconfigure, if they can find two or three more spaces, 'cause half of those spaces, the way they had it set up by combining the lots, we're gonna go to sixty. All right, so you're really not talking about a lot of extra spots that are gonna be part of the building itself, six, sixty four, seventy four. There's not a lot of extra spaces there. Yeah, maybe the, to me, it's a difficult situation, because the medical is taking up a lot, okay? I do have some sympathy for them in trying to be able to maximize their space. Uh, it, it is, it's a very difficult situation, and, you know, i- is it a hardship self-imposed, or is it a hardship based on, you know, the sign of the times, with what's going on with the real estate industry, and, you know, to try and make a comparison in Georgetown about other, you know, other restaurants, if you're talking about Rory's, parking is the number one factor down there, there's no, you know, there's like four parking spots out front for a place that is, uh, sit, seat thirty to forty people, very, very challenging today.
Are you guys in board-only discussion, or, or...
I have no idea.
We're...
Yeah, we are just sort of trying.
So if we go with Dave's thought, so whatever the A R thing is...
A and R.
A and R.
That means combining lots, right? So your suggestion is they would own each lot, be abutting lots, right? These guys would own the abutting lots.
Yeah.
That would be correct.
The septic would be permitted on sixty to help the other seventy four, whatever the heck it's called. You'd retain the house in the driveway, so your parking for sixty would be intact, and you would eliminate those ten spots. That, that's what you're suggesting. I can't speak for Peter, but I, if the house were intact and it was conditioned properly, I could probably live with that.
I'm sorry, that, that's asking for a special variance for the entire septic for another building, if you moved onto a separate property. building if you moved onto a separate property. Is it not?
Still require the variance.
Correct, okay. And I still...
It would, it would be limited to a difference to a specific use of septic.
I don't see, I don't see the hardship of sixty with the topography, with the financial hardship.
I think you're right, but when you combine the lots, the lots now, the hardship from sixty-four to seventy-four becomes a hardship for sixty as well.
And so I'm assuming...
This hearing, they're not combined, right? So that's all I'm working on right now.
The planning board would have to do that, I think.
Right, so I don't know how that works for us.
So if the planning board were to do that, then I think Peter and I would...
Yeah, we'll be back.
We would want to be back, help frame how that works.
Can't condition?
How much land is on sixty?
Can't condition that.
Three quarters of an acre.
Three quarters of an acre. Point five seven acres.
And there wetland issues out back?
Probably.
Also in the spring.
Have you tested for Title V?
Oh, yeah, I've passed Title V.
Passed Title V?
He's passed up.
He's the tester.
I failed theirs.
We fixed that stuff.
There's no room for another septic system on sixty?
My whole side yard where they're proposing to put that field is where my leach field is now.
You don't have space for another one?
Well, I have a...
Yeah, there's a lot of room in the back.
Okay. There's another option, okay?
Expand both lots and park on top of it. Leave your parking just like you had it.
Don't have to, don't have to.
What you wanna do, I mean, leave your parking...
Absolutely have to share a septic if there's room for sixty to be independent. I don't know if that alleviates anybody's concerns, but...
I, I think, I don't know, I don't know if that matters.
Doesn't to me.
It doesn't to me either.
Doesn't matter to me at all.
If they share a septic and they own the lot and they condo it...
Right, I don't have an issue with it either way.
I think there's a lot to be said for an owner occupied dwelling there. I think that's a big deal.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
I mean, I don't know if that can be incorporated or not, but, you know, they shave off, maybe, maybe if they came and shaved off a piece of that lot and said, we're gonna leave this house and structure and residence alone, they're gonna buy or divide that lot to incorporate in, that gives them just enough room to expand the septic a little bit without having to do the wall, and, you know, I'd be a little more comfortable there.
Does that make it a subsized, what's the minimum lot size?
I don't know, I'm not designing all this stuff. Well, this is an added, they had a proposal a couple months ago that more or less met a lot of these requirements from a capacity...
The only thing...
That didn't go outside the boundaries at all, and all I'm saying is, well, maybe if you just have enough, you can, there's other options there that...
I don't think that was an acceptable, no one would ever buy that house with that, that high wall and parking.
Basically, parking is a value.
No, I know, but I just feel like that's not a good option either.
Well, Jeff's suggestion, just taking, taking another...
They're gonna buy it. And if we say it's still a residential, you know, it's gotta be, it doesn't have to be owner occupied, but it would have to be, or if we...
Stays residential.
As a resident, that's up to them if they want to, I don't know.
Well, if we put that in as a condition...
Nice house, I'd buy it.
I'm just not interested in designing this, you guys. I understand what the issues are. If we go to vote right now, I, it's not gonna pass, because I'm not gonna vote for it the way it is. If you wanna go back and revisit this again, I think you should, because I, I think there's some really pos, good possibilities, but I, the problem is when we send people back to sort of revamp it, it certainly doesn't mean that I or one of the members of board isn't going to grant a variance based upon that. However, this board, the reason that it's taken us so long to talk about this, in some towns, it wouldn't be five minutes, and you would say, no, done, go, not gonna happen. But we do not, we want something nice to happen with that building. We want something nice to happen to sixty. We want this all to work. I know we can't have everything we want, but neither can you guys. So I think you, you need to, I, whether you can take a part of sixty and make the septic work in a different way so that the integrity of sixty stays the way it is, that is obviously the biggest issue. I'm not sure, but I'm not the designer on these things, and I, this board desperately wants to figure it out for you, but you guys should figure it out in the best way possible for everybody, and go from there.
The only thing that I, I totally agree with you, but in the interest of not having four more meetings where we're like, well, if you move this here, like, you know what I mean? I feel like it's only fair to sort of give a little direction, because I don't wanna come and talk about this six more times.
I think we have.
Okay.
I think they know where this board stands on certain issues.
I think you need to be a little bit more clearer about what you're saying, how you want their septic not to impact number sixty at all, is that what you're saying?
No, no, certainly from the street is what I'm, I don't mind if there's an elevated area behind that house, I'm sure there are really nice ways of doing that. I, no problem with that at all.
Better than what you've seen here?
Well, obviously, my issue is the parking problem.
I know, but I just wanna help show I'm clear, they're clear, because I don't think, I don't think we're as clear as you picked me up.
Well, I'll tell you, you've still got a hurdle that Jeff and I are still a little bit caught up on, and that's the granting of variance, and I don't know if there's any, you don't think there's any way of avoiding that.
I a hundred percent agree with you if it's separate lots, but if planning makes it one lot...
Well, look, I mean, it's still zoned residential, and they need to use variance to convert it to the, to, you know, what they wanna use, and they gotta meet the variance thresholds, that's it. I mean, you could, otherwise, you could just buy the lot next door, and the one next door, and the one next door, and the one next door, and all of a sudden, oh, this pre-existed, you know, their lot isn't even, their lot is zoned residential too. It's, they're not even...
Right.
The whole thing is non-conforming. Next thing you know, you're all the way down to Bank of America. With, theoretically, well, you'd hit Witter speed or whatever, but, you know, where does it end? I mean, you could go to the next door, you could go to the other side and go that way. I mean, based on that logic...
I guess so, my question is, without sounding facetious, are you ever gonna be happy? You know what I mean? Like, is there something that can make you...
I'll be as happy as I allow myself to be.
I know, but you know what I, do you know what I mean? Like, is it...
No, I, I, look, as proposed, I don't, I don't see that this meets the requirements of a use variance period. I really don't.
As proposed, we're suggesting we give them maybe some...
If you've got case law that suggests that hardship on one lot can be applied to a different lot next door, I, I have never seen that in...
May I respond?
Please. We're a little informal at this hour.
We're suggesting that the lots would be combined as a single lot, and so it would have to be conditioned upon approval from the planning board that they would be one lot, and therefore, one lot would be examined for purposes of the hardship. I could find your case law to support any of the criteria. The question is whether you're gonna work with us. If you're telling us today that there's absolutely no way that you would find a variance, then we're wasting your time, we're wasting our time.
Right, and I don't blame you for coming here first, because this is a lot faster than going through everything else.
So...
I think, if you've got, if you've got legal substance to suggest that this board has, has, could really justify a use variance, and I mean really, not, you know, we gotta go a little deeper than what we scratched surface on so far. If you take a sliver of that residential lot, say, and you take the septic, you, you had a big high septic system before and there were parking on it and everything else, put it down, move it over a little bit, park on top of half of it, do very little, if any, change to sixty that the common person would ever notice. Keep all the parking off that side, you know, and leave, leave it a residential lot over there. I would get a little more comfortable that that perhaps, you know, you're, you're maybe meeting the requirements. I, I don't know, but I'd like to see something that suggests that the hardship on, on, that exists could somehow be applied to expand not just the intensity of the use, but the area of the use onto another non-conforming lot. I've never seen that, and you're suggesting that that's, doesn't seem to be a big deal, and I'm not an attorney, so help me out here.
Well, the hardship applies to the lot, and so what we're suggesting is that we combine the lot and we establish the hardship based on that lot. And so basically, what would happen is that if the board was so inclined to approve it, it would be subject to us combining the lot through an A and R endorsement from the planning board. And so that's how you get to your one lot. And so the hardship is based on that one lot. It's really a form over a substance. I mean, basically, we would ask the board to...
Done this before?
Have I done this before?
Yeah, you've done this before.
I've done a lot of things before.
Have you done this before? Have you seen this done before? I'm just curious.
Well, we can come back next, well, we can come...
To me, this sounds like an appeal all day long, that if somebody chose to appeal it, this would never fly, but I don't know.
Well, I, you know...
Not that that's a big concern.
We'll let the court decide if that's the, the way to go, but what I'm saying is that we could always go to the planning board, get an A and R endorsement, and come back before you and say, we have a single lot. But, on the other hand...
I don't think my concerns would be addressed. I don't, I'm not, what I'm suggesting is, I'm not so sure in my mind legally that that covers it, but I guess I gotta go back and look at it closer, I don't know.
I, I just have a statement. When, when these guys, when Chris came over and they dug all their deep holes in my yard and everything way out back, which is along where the phone company is, I was always under the assumption that they were going to turn that leach field that is now sitting next to my property and raise it up to the top of my fence. I was assuming that they were gonna just turn that and run it straight across the back of my property, from where it is now, all the way across the back, from one end to the other, however long they needed it. That's where they dug a lot of holes. I assumed they were gonna leave my leach field where it is, in my side yard. This, this plan shows the whole system being where mine is now. I, I mean, I don't know how many square feet that is, but to me, that seems like there's plenty of room there to do that. You'd have a raised system, but it would be across the whole back of my property, and you could stick a fence up and just cut my lot down and have a smaller yard. I know you have to maintain a certain amount of, I don't know what it is, I'm not sure exactly how much property I have, if it's two-thirds of an acre or three-quarters of an acre.
I don't know what the non-conforming...
And get rid of the parking in the front, but...
Mr. Chairman, I need a motion to go beyond the ten P M rule, so...
Second.
All those in favor?
I...
Mr. Chairman, regarding the septic system location, we're constrained because of the setback to the, to the wetland.
All right, yeah.
So we wanted to push, we wanted to push it further back, but we were really handcuffed because of the local, local border health rules.
And is there a possibility of coming in instead of six thousand gallons, coming in at five, coming in at forty-five hundred gallons a day? I mean, in, in an ideal world, six thousand's where you wanna hit, but, again, sort of compromising.
In order to, to accomplish a goal of some kind, or...
Uh... About just minimize the overall impact.
Well, I'm trying to give you bigger septic than you originally had in your first plan, and hopefully, maybe even spreading it out. So you originally wanted X amount of gallons, but it was super elevated, so is there any way to, to take that amount of gallons and spread it out so it's not quite as high and all that? And then are we parking on top of it as well? Probably, so...
I mean, well, a couple things. One thing I wanted to see if we could take like a two-minute recess, because I wanna talk to the site owner.
Sure, absolutely.
And secondly, we could come up with different designs and alternative designs, but, and I could put together the best legal brief ever, but if I'm not gonna satisfy one of the members, no matter what we do, then, then we're not gonna waste our time.
I know, I'm more aware of that.
So, I mean, we're willing to work with you as long as the board is willing to work with us. I mean...
And that ultimately means, are we going to grant a variance?
I'm not asking you to grant a variance today, you're right, right.
I know, but that's the, that's the fifty-four thousand dollar question. We, we needed to know that.
Right.
You need to know that beforehand, so why don't we take a break for a couple minutes, and we can rest a little bit here.
Thank you.
Can I give these guys a gold star for not having to...
Can I give these guys a gold star for not having to, uh?
Well, okay, we're on, folks. You've been talking with your client.
Yeah, what we would propose, Mr. Chairman, is that perhaps we continue for one more month to the next board meeting. Uh, between now and the next board meeting, I would respectfully request that at least one or two members become part of a subcommittee to have an informal dialogue about some of the discussions we've had with, uh, Mr. Moore being one of those members. Uh, if he's available, uh, seriously, I mean, I-
No, no, I, I, it's probably the most reasonable.
So that we could see if we could get a dialogue together to see, 'cause I need to convince you and the other board members that what we have is a, is a worthy project. And so what, what we'd like to do is in that subcommittee, maybe brainstorm, provide some, identify some other alternatives that are out there, some of which have been discussed this evening, and see if we could, uh, come back to the full board and present that.
I'm, I think that's-
I don't know, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I-
I, I think-
Just 'cause we've never, ever, ever-
I don't think you necessarily mean it's an official subcommittee, but certainly a meeting of minds with a couple of-
You're not supposed to talk about the merits of the case outside the hearing, I'm confused. That scares me.
No, but certainly, no, this is a discussion which is not binding on the board. It's, it's a matter of a way to get informal technical feedback, uh, to see whether we could find something, uh, that could be presented to the board. And it's not part of the public hearing process, and there's nothing wrong with having a subcommittee. I've had subcommittees on a, a number of different planning board and zoning board projects.
I mean, if you're okay with it, I don't know if there's somebody else that you would want.
Anyone?
I'm, I'm willing to do it, I, I could do it, unless you want one of those.
That's good, takes us off the football.
No, I think you, you probably need to get some planning, you know, the town planner and maybe planning board member involved, but, um, you know.
But maybe just-
Can I suggest that perhaps we withdraw and then come back? 'Cause I think whatever you come back with is gonna be substantially changed if there's any kind of agreement on anything.
Well.
And alleviate the, well. I, I, I am, we can't talk about this hearing outside the hearing, well.
No, we could, we could-
I guess if there's no quorum, I suppose.
We could have, right, there's no quorum, we could have a discussion about technical issues, design issues, I don't-
I'm, I'm, I'm personally, I'm, I-
Not more than two members, yeah.
They have some issues of, of the legality and justification for, for variance, given the rather complicated scenario that we've talked about. Certainly more complicated than, than anything that I've had to deal with personally. So I don't underst- I, I don't, um, have a background in similar cases to, to lean on here. That's a big issue with me, and, and some of the other impacts, obviously, which I-
Right.
Everybody else has got some concerns with.
Right, I mean, what we could do is come up with some ideas and, and based on what we've heard this evening and try to, uh, find, uh, some common ground, not with the committee I'm talking about with the board, but at least having a dialogue with one or two, uh, board members would also facilitate that discussion so that, uh, we could see if we could get any closer.
Yeah.
And if we can't, we can't, so.
And Patty, maybe just check.
Hey, go to town council.
Yeah.
Well, I think I-
And then town council.
We, we do need to ver- you would like, I would too, like a little bit more help on the clarification on granting a variance based upon this, if the two lots become one, if they stay separate. We need to iron, you guys can iron that out, get us some information on that. And do we need, uh, the planner involved in that?
I, I would recommend that you include the building inspector, who's a zoning enforcement officer. I'm happy to do it, Gina's obviously happy to meet with you. And then I would, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have planning involved intimately in this anyway, so I would think the town planner and perhaps a member of the planning board that has, maybe has interest in this, because you're gonna go down that road anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we'll give it one shot, give it one million a shot. And if we can't find common ground, we don't go find common ground.
If, if everybody else is comfortable with that scenario legally or what have you, I'm, I don't have a problem doing that. I will be out of the country later this month, so it needs to happen soon or later.
We'll meet this week?
Tomorrow morning.
Seriously, though, I, I think-
I'm, I'm fine with it.
We certainly wanna work with the board.
Absolutely.
So if, uh-
Good, someone like to make a motion to continue this hearing?
I can't even talk anymore.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this meeting until, uh, what's the date, Patty, April?
It's April first. Immediately following the first scheduled hearing at seven thirty.
Yeah, the second, it would be the second hearing.
What she said.
Do I have to say it too? I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing till April first, immediately following the first scheduled hearing.
At seven thirty.
At seven thirty.
Yay!
Second to-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, um.
Or through, through Patty to set something up.
Okay, we'll, we'll just have to identify a couple of dates, uh, two or three or four dates, and then.
Uh. Next week would, for me, next week would actually be, be this week.
Do we know who's gonna do it?
Excuse me? Yeah, no, no, that, I'm just gonna look at my calendar so that I-
It's gonna be Jeff, Gina, and then other people. I'll get them, thank you very much.
While they're both here, you know, maybe we can just make sure. What's your availability, Gina? Oh, that's too bad.
Well, of course.
When, next week? I think Thursday next week would be bad for me, and I think I'm okay.
Would this be like early evening, is that what you, is that what most of you?
I can do Friday this week, Monday, Tuesday of next week.
Basically only use this week.
I can't do Thursday.
This one, this is the only one that-
How about Tuesday, the eleventh?
This is the only one we really use, Patty, 'cause the one that has the house on it.
Are we coming today?
No, it's not this one, it's the other one.
Maybe, I don't know. You want him?
I have that open.
Need a copy?
No, I don't.
Tuesday, the eleventh?
Really, or I mean, if it's something better, it's fine, I mean.
Yeah, no, I-
I'm just gonna-
What time do you think?
It's wicked dry, 'cause I, my, my, I know.
You probably want a planner here?
I gotta sit down for one second.
We gotta open this hearing.
Yeah, we gotta open it and then they're going to-
Can you guys, just one second?
During the day?
I'm around during the day.
The day's better than that, so, um.
I'm guy, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm, like, early afternoon or something like that, lunch hour, early afternoon?
Just pick the time, that's fine, yeah, one, one's fine with us.
It's subject to whoever else is around and available. I think, uh, and if you need to go morning, John Mativier is probably somebody that- I think he does inspections in the afternoon, but he, if he, 'cause in advance, maybe this would work for him. If not, if you make it in the morning before lunch, that's okay with me too.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, actually before lunch is fine with me too.
I, I, you might wanna have Tilly?
Tuesday, the eleventh at one o'clock. Assuming others can make it, no, I appreciate it.
Are you gonna be here?
Yeah.
I'm available.
Where, where are you gonna do this?
I don't know.
So we're in town hall?
See if there's a, um, if there's a meeting.
There's a, there's gotta be a rule available. During the day?
Depends with the council meeting, let me check.
I would think at one o'clock in the afternoon, it's gonna be a rule available.
I mean, actually, I have an appointment Tuesday, eleventh at one o'clock, so I'm going in the second meeting room, but I guess I'll-
She's gonna show up anyway, you might as well invite her.
I actually have the second floor meeting that day, so I'll, I won't read it.
Yeah, we get, I'm sorry. Can you read that out when I open the next hearing? It's just gonna take a second.
I know.
Are we all set, right, yeah?
Okay, guys, thank you, guys.
Alright, so, um.
Let me just quick check the calendar. The eleventh.
I just need to open this second hearing and then-
John, I'll just email you with, um-
Okay. No, no, you gotta-
Sorry, Gina.
I told her we needed to open and close the next hearing and that we-
There's a, there's a meeting, there's a meeting on March eleventh in the second floor meeting room at eight o'clock in the morning. Nothing else, so if you want, I can hold that one tomorrow, I won't be there tomorrow, Thursday.
I gotta read the whole thing.
Uh, just a minute, yeah.
Jeff, and that's the one that you're gonna make a motion for the fee? It's a sticker somewhere.
Okay, wait a minute. Always edge people, yeah.
Hold on, where am I going? Seventy West Main now, right? Let me open it, make sure I'm opening the m- Oh, I'm getting messed up, 'cause it's seventy West Main and sixty East Main.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was doing, too, I kept wanting to say West Main, alright.
I'd like, I'm, I got it, I'm gonna open the hearing here, I'm gonna, I'd like to reopen the hearing for seventy West Main Street. And I would like, uh, someone to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad. Someone, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, secondly, we're going to, Gina's going, or you're going to?
I think we, uh, maybe, I know it's late, read this correspondence.
Yep.
Today's correspondence, okay, you want me to read this real quick?
Yes, please.
From, uh-
Oh, right, I'm sorry, go right here.
From John Mativier regarding, uh, seventy West Main Street, map six C, lot one seventeen. Dear Mr. Demater, Your permit application to operate a convenience store, retail store and services at seventy West Main Street has been denied. Property is located in industrial A I A zone set forth in chapter one sixty-five, section two of the Georgetown, Georgetown zoning bylaw. This property with previously existing nonconforming use as a restaurant will require a use variance in the zoning board of appeals is set forth in the joining Georgetown zoning bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, sections nine, eighty-four, and ninety-four, and Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-eight, section ten, in order to operate a retail store or service use. Additionally, the change in use from a restaurant to a retail store or service triggers the requirement for site plan approval for the Town of Georgetown Planning Board, section one sixty-five, eighty-three B of the Georgetown, uh, of the Town of Georgetown zoning bylaws. Anyone agreed by the interpretation of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer has a right to appeal to the zoning board of appeals. All appeals to this A B A must be filed within thirty days of this denial. Uh, noted, uh, and John Mativier, Town of Georgetown Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer. Sorry, that was dated, um, March third, twenty thirteen.
Thank you, and then the, uh, the applicant is-
This letter is, is from Evans Law and Associates, Associates dated March fourth, twenty fourteen. Dear Ms. Patari, on behalf of attorney Gary E. Evans and the above applicant enclosed, please find petition to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice now pending before this board. As you know, yesterday I received notice from the building commissioner and town hall, including a newly issued building permit denial letter. In this newly issued letter, the building commissioner cites town bylaws to inform the applicant that his denial requires a use variance from this board. The first denial letter dated eleventh, December eleventh, twenty thirteen, stated that a special permit would be required. Accordingly, I have entered this petition to withdraw the special permit application without prejudice, expecting that the board will so allow the enclosed. We are also submitting application for a use variance. Under the circumstances, we would appreciate and respectfully request that this application for a use variance be set for hearing at seven thirty at the April first, twenty fourteen board meeting. If you have any questions or require additional information, please contact this office. Thank you in advance for your attention to these manner, matters. Very truly yours, Robert V. Fitterin, Esquire, Evans Law and Associates.
Thank you, so. I don't know. Do you want me to make a motion to allow them to withdraw?
Yep.
Okay, I move, uh, the board allow the applicant for seventy West Main Street to withdraw their app, the application for a special permit without prejudice?
Yep, same cause, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gina seconded.
Um, I'd further move that because this change was, um, due to an error in the interpretation of the original code, and they have to reapply for variance instead of a, um, special permit, I move that, uh, we allow them to reapply without a fee, an additional fee, since they've already paid a fee to the, to the town, and, uh, including the fee for the legal ad, whatever that amount is. I don't have a specific amount, Patty, but.
It's a six, the six hundred dollars.
I don't know, did I put that in form of a motion adequately?
Yep.
Someone second that?
Second.
Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, guys. Alrighty. We done now?
And we need to actually close seventy West, right?
I move that we close the hearing for seventy West Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did we close the business meeting?
Yes, we did.
Yes. Thanks, Christine.
Okay, Christine.
No, it's all gonna be ironed out.